Good afternoon. Verizon Time has it at 3:00 PM, not the 4:00 PM that the wall clock says. So we'll go ahead and call our November 6th Middlesex County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I'd like to ask Wayne Jesse if he'd please open with prayer, followed by Matt Walker, leading us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear Lord, I just like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to see another day, dear Lord. And let's pray for the sick and shut in and pray for the men and women overseas and help keep them out of harm's way. And dear Lord, let us make wise and just decisions as we conduct county business. This is my prayer, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen. Would all citizens of our nation rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Nice to see members of the public here today. We appreciate it when citizens take part in their government and just welcome and glad to have you here. First item of business is approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody have any issues or alterations with the consent agenda? Otherwise, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, consent agenda.
Made and seconded. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. At this point, I'd like to open the meeting up to public comments, please. One citizen at a time, please come up, state your name and address. Please go with our three-minute limit per speaker unless you're representing four more, in which case you can have 12 minutes. First citizen, please. Don't everybody jump up at one time.
You have a comment?
Public comment.
I'll be honest.
Please come up.
Hi, my name is Susan Jones and I live at 509 Eubank Landing Road in Hopping, which is in the north end of Hummel Field. Today, I am not only speaking for myself, but for an additional 45 homeowners that are located near the airport that may be directly impacted by any and all decisions made regarding the strip of land. We noticed in your board package that a meeting has been scheduled for November 8th with representatives from not only our county, but Lancaster County to discuss whether or not to form an airport authority and under what context. We want to ensure that the board has provided our input regarding this endeavor prior to that meeting. The brief letter I have provided you along with four pages of homeowner signatures attached discusses two of our chief concerns. One, currently, there is no airport committee representation of homeowners adversely impacted by the airport that could advocate for the residents surrounding the airport. This committee appears to be primarily comprised of past and present pilots. We live day-to-day with not only the noise, but the concern for safety. We pay forward through our taxes, but we do not benefit from it. Therefore, we are requesting that at least two impacted homeowners located in proximity of the airport who are not pilots, past or present, be represented on this committee or any other endeavor that concerns this airport. Two, we seriously oppose the possible formation of an airport authority. Forming such an entity would have a negative impact to the citizens of Middlesex County. This would include a governing group that has significant powers without accountability to our citizens, such as circumventing elements of local government that slows down their agenda. The other counties outside of Middlesex that would participate in this authority do not have to live with any local adverse impacts of the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next citizen, please.
I'm Lloyd Kimbrough from Kennard Lane in Deltaville. I just wanted to reiterate my request last month that the board submit a letter to the governor and our local representatives citing our opposition to Omega overfishing, exceeding the limit that they had agreed to of 51,000 tons of manhattan taken from Chesapeake Bay this year. Since our last meeting, the Atlantic State's Marine Fisheries Commission has found the state of Virginia out of compliance. They have sent that censure to the next level up in their bureaucracy. It's quite possible that Omega will need to deduct the 30,000 metric tons that they exceeded their limit this year from next year's catch limit. And it's quite possible that their qualification, saying that they are a good steward of the environment, will need to be reevaluated. I know we were successful at getting 52 letters from Herd's Hardware in Deltaville, signed by local residents and submitted. They will be taken to the governor this week or next week, and I encourage the board, on behalf of Middlesex County, to send such a letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens wish to address their board supervisors at this time?
My name is Jeffrey Scott Jones and I'm 55 years old. And when I was just got in eighth grade, that was a star receiver right there. But what I'm really worried about, I live at the north end of that airfield, and I have my whole life. And I used to go over as a kid and everything to the campground, Great's Point Campground, and which I had the most fun. I still have a lot of friends over there that live over there, not live over there, but they camp over there. And the bigger this airfield gets, one plane going into that campground, and you only think about it, that would be devastating. You're talking women, men, children, and everything else. You better keep an eye on how much, what's going on with that airfield, because they are doing pretty much whatever they want to do. But like I say, it's like 500 campuses over there. One plane goes in there, you think about it. Just think about it. Thanks.
Next citizen, please. No one wants? Seeing none, we will declare the public comment period closed. And Betty, if you would make available to the folks that are interested in the Airport Committee, the form that we have for application to serve on boards and commissions, so that they can fill that out and have it on file when there are vacancies. I think we certainly look at each one on its own merit.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, the meetings on Friday have been canceled.
Okay. All righty, moving on to reports from constitutional officers. Betty Bray was unaware that we had changed the meeting to Wednesday because of Election Day, and so she has a doctor's appointment. But she is capably representative. If anybody has any questions about her report, pages 38 through 42 in your packet.
And Tracy, I believe, is here from Earl.
Right.
If there are any questions.
I was alluding to Tracy. Thank you, Tracy, for coming, and apparently we're not going to put you on the hot seat. And the next is the Commissioner of Revenue, Bonnie Davenport. Bonnie, do you have anything you want to say to us?
No.
Anybody have any questions of Bonnie? I have one question with regards to the meals tax issues. And I don't know whether that's a joint question or what. The status of establishments that are either behind or not paying that tax.
That would need a report to show you the progression of how it's going.
Okay.
That should be a report.
All right. Are we satisfied with the progress? Because I know at least one has gone out of business and left, and that was in Deltaville, and we're not going to be able to.
They didn't have the, so I think things are working.
Okay. All righty. That's my one question. Anybody else? All righty, moving right along. We get to VDOT, and I don't see Joyce McGowan out there. Saw her at the Oyster Festival dinner, but I didn't see her. And Dr. Peter Gretz for School Matters. Don't see anybody from the schools. He had a budget supplement request on pages 43 through 47. We've got some action that we need to take there.
I believe that those are basically in and outs, and grants.
Okay.
They're federal grants.
Mr. Kuntz, you're a specialist at bringing all of these things together into a concise motion.
For fear of overstepping, I'd like to at least see if someone from the schools is coming before I step into that role, just so that we're not setting a new precedent.
All right. Do we want to delay that?
Yeah.
That's more than fine.
Yeah, I'd be great.
More than fine. Social Services, we have report only, pages 48 through 51. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Middlesex Water Authority easement update and acquisition agreement, Greg Chambers.
I asked Matt to get me on the agenda early, and he certainly complied.
First 10 minutes. Can't do any better than that.
As you know, the USDA is financing our project, and I'll remind you that it's hard to put 42 miles of pipe in the ground before your first customer writes a check. So we are really dependent upon the USDA financing to move this project forward. One of the many requirements is that we get an easement from each property that we're going to cross, including our subscribers, so that we can put the pipe in the ground. I want to thank, well, we've been at this for almost a year at this point, okay? And it's frankly the thing that has delayed us moving forward for most of 2019. I want to thank two people, especially, well, Betty and Matt for.
Especially Betty.
My second especially was going to be especially Betty, who seems to work 36 hours a day on this, and I understand she has another job. So these folks have done an extraordinary job moving this project forward. Unfortunately, despite the best of our intentions and all the sessions we've done at the museum, we're a little bit more than half of the way towards getting all the easements that we need. I haven't, when I talk to people in the community, detected much opposition. I've detected a lot of people that want us to get moving. And unfortunately, I think there's a lot of people out there that have an investment property or a second home and just aren't on top of things and complying with the requests that we've made for easements. So the MWA has drawn the conclusion that to move the project forward, we need to hire a firm that does consultancy in this area of acquiring easements and the legal basis to move forward with the project. We went through a bid process that I believe we discussed last month and have selected Bowman Consulting was the low bidder, and it's also the folks that we're very comfortable working with because they're the folks that have done most of the engineering work. And to say their bid was the low bid is an understatement. It was very, very significantly, like a zero, away from the second bidder that we had. So I'm here to ask the Board of Supervisors to consider continuing to loan us some money until we get to our first customer and can start paying you back, to get us through the easement acquisition process up to the point where we may have a few people that we need to take to court. But to get us up to that point, we need $226,270. That would cover the first phases of the project. As I said, I still hear, you know, out in public, I heard it yesterday from someone down in Deltaville, when are you guys going to get going? I know the public interest is still there. I know personally, the reason I chose to get involved in this is I think it's the right thing to do for the people of Deltaville, but more importantly, for property values, economic development, and growth in this county, and expanding our tax base, which I know you all care about. So that's why we're here, okay?
Greg, not a day goes by that I don't get asked, because I'm sort of in the dirty water hotspot down in Deltaville. But just for clarification for the public here, the USDA is requiring that these easements be in place before we can put it out to bid. But they consider in process, in place. And so by going to the motions that Greg is asking us to loan the money, that's capital L-O-A-N, loan the money, will speed the process up, because we've gotten all of the low-hanging fruit that we can. All of the folks that are saying, yeah, let me give you my easement, they've done that. And now we've got some folks that need to be talked to, and it's better for a third party, in my estimation, to do that. And every advice we've gotten is for the county not to do that, to have a firm do that, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I can speak and elaborate on that point if you'd like me to. We have, as Greg and Chip have already stated, we've pretty much been in the acquisition mode now for better over a year, and we have worked with voluntary donations. The USDA wanted us, they look at water and sewer improvements and other infrastructure similar to those as property improvements, and therefore, they wanted the authority to make at least a good-hearted attempt to see if the easements and necessary right-of-ways would be donated for their construction. They look at it as a benefit and a property improvement, not a negative or so much of a taking, so to speak. So we have done just that. We have received a fairly good amount. It's actually lowered the acquisition cost substantially, so hat tip to the USDA, they've been partially correct. What we're left with, as my other chairman pointed out, is we're dealing with largely either apathetic or absentee property owner base that is going to take a little bit more doing to obtain. And there's also been kind of a rumor going around the community that these easements somehow are worth a lot of money. We've got initial estimates on the square footage of property that is covered under the easements, and as my report stated, the total, the grand total, is 69,000 for all of them. The vast majority of them are $20, $60, $100, in that range. And that's just a preliminary estimate. Long story short, by having a third-party firm come out, assess the value, make an offer, what they've done is bring a third-party, non-biased party, pretty much to the table to do that work, and make sure all the i's and t's are dotted, that if the Water Authority needed to take someone to eminent domain in order to secure the easements, we haven't committed a procedural error in doing so. Their professionalism is day in, day out. Now Heather and I, in our consultations and leading up to the RFQ and the interviews, have been somewhat reassured by other entities that engage in this on a more day-to-day basis, that we probably will find that we don't have to take anyone to court, that a lot of those negotiations play out by the consultant. But in the eventuality that we do have to take someone to court, this contract that has been approved by the USDA allows for Task Four to be implemented, and there's an estimated cost in doing so, which is Task Four in the contract. You have at your seats tonight the final approved version of the contract that the USDA has green-lighted and all their inclusions are included in that, that the Water Authority wishes to engage the services of Bowman Consulting under. And you also have at your seat a promissory note that is very substantially similar to the promissory note that the Water Authority uses when they borrow money from the EDA for operating expenses and whatnot. The one thing I want the board to hear is, this is a loan, and this loan would be paid back when the USDA and the Water Authority close their loan and grants at the end of the project and culmination of it.
Because this process is a allowable expense.
It is very much a legitimate project expense and has been pre-authorized by the USDA. We've also added in here that the Water Authority would repay these funds by December 31st, 2024, which we surely expect to have the water system and the USDA loan closed by then. So what.
That means close of the entire project.
Close of the project and being under the USDA loans, which we would be repaying the board in full on the loan's amount. On that note, I think the board's been aware of the process that we've engaged in. Of course, it has occupied a lot of staff's time. We are still working with property owners to obtain easements. We're going to work on that. Up until the date, we execute contracts and then have a kickoff meeting with the consultant to kind of say, here are the easements you go after, here are the easements we're continuing to go after. The contract, pretty much self-explanatory, it's on a per-easement basis. So Betty and I and Heather are still working with property owners to get easements donated, and that could affect the ultimate.
I'd like to add my thanks to Heather and Matt, and then to quote Greg, especially Betty, on all the sadities that y'all have taken down at the farmers' markets and various other public events with the agreement, so that you make it easy on the public to sign up. That's where we've gotten a lot of these folks taken care of, so.
And new subscribers.
And new subscribers, correct.
And I'll add to this, it's, I won't call it sad, but it's interesting that the estimated cost of the actual easement, the actual square footage that we need, is substantially less than the cost for the consultant to go get them. But that's where we are. And in order to make sure we have our i's and t's crossed, on the outside chance that we may have to go to court, it's definitely my recommendation that the Water Authority engage the services of an outside third-party consultant.
All right, we have a request before us, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Could I make a comment that might be a question? I noticed that the proposal is not to exceed. Is there somebody at the Water Authority that is going to be tracking the anticipated number of parcels that are going to be going through waiver valuation, negotiation for permanent easement, all the way through a theoretical contested cases? So that if they do a good job and they make more people convinced earlier to just sign the damn thing, we're not necessarily spending the whole 318,000.
Bowman is very well aware of that. At some point, we need to give them a number, but they've made it clear that those that people just mail in voluntarily, you know, they're not going to get paid for, okay?
Well, there's tiers of how much, how expensive it could be to get the last one, and this was always going to be the case, and we still don't know much more than, we got half of them the easy way, now we're into level two, and it could go all the way to level seven. I just want to be tracking very closely whether it's county loan money, or USDA grant money, or eventual subscriber money.
It's subscriber money.
Whoever's money it is, I don't want it all going out upfront, so that we're then already in operation, trying to pay off bigger capital expenses than were necessary because a consultant got over on us.
Yeah, that's exactly how it's being done. In fact, that has emerged to be the purpose of our Friday morning conference call with Bowman, to go over progress, you know, update documents as necessary. But what's the question I always ask at that call, Betty? How many?
I think to answer Mr. Kuntz's question directly, yes, not only Mrs. Muncie, but Mr. Walker and Mr. Chambers are all intimately weekly reviewing these numbers. So we anticipate, and then I will be involved as well, so we are hoping through our weekly conference calls Friday morning to stay on top of that number, if that can, I hope that answers.
It does.
And for clarity purposes, the Water Authority is asking for today only the amount of money to secure the services for the consultant and an estimated amount of value on the offers, on the actual easements themselves. We're not asking, or the Water Authority is not asking for money to go to court yet. That will be a later stage and will probably come in December, January, if needed. I think I want to highlight this. I know I speak for the consultant, Lee Cooper and Bowman, they're going to do everything in their power not to have to go to court. But we can't have a few hold up the entire project, and at some point in time, negotiations stop and we just go to the main route.
The ask is for Task 1, 2, and 3 in total of 157,270, plus another 60-some-lot thousand that we think.
$69,000 for the other one, yes.
That's the summary of the math. The final page of the proposal, and I apologize, this is fairly fresh to me.
That's fine.
That 161,000, it's likely we can expect that you're going to be coming back for that and hopefully have some savings from the first round.
It's hopeful we won't be coming back at all for that, because we won't have to go to court. But that's an estimate if we had to.
Understood. So what you're doing is making it so that when we see you next, it will be either, we were very successful, we came in under, and we have all the easements, we don't need to go to court, or we were moderately successful, we do have some court coming, but as we set expectations, here are the costs associated, and now we have to come back and get another loan to go all the way to where we're going, which is all the easements.
That's correct.
And to sort of follow up and hopefully make you feel a little bit better with that. Bowman is the outfit that we've been working with all along, and for them to come in so nicely low on these estimates, and we can continue working with the people that we've known and trusted and verified for a good while, so. Serving on the Water Authority, I feel comfortable.
We checked references on them all the same very well.
And frankly, we've gotten, you know, they know that speed is really a very high thing for us, getting this done. You know, we've gotten documents from them. They've already started, right? I mean, they're giving us, the 69,000 came from, you know, an assessment that they made that really is part of this contract, you know?
So the other question I have is, treating this as an honest-to-God loan, the intent is sometime before 2024, one-time payment in full, not a series of progress payments?
One-time payment in full.
But it's basically, we need this money now, and as soon as we get to the point where the grant is funded, we repay you in one lump sum. And there is a penalty of 4% interest.
The Water Authority meeting after, we have confidence that our cash flow will keep us from, you know, from coming back here, okay? That day is when you'll get your money back.
And Matt, fund balance, is that where this is coming from?
It would have to, yes, sir.
And what does that do to our fund balance if an auditor were to come in after we make this decision?
With certain recent decisions involving some of the capital improvement projects that we've been working with the schools on, I think it's negligible. We're still in a healthy place on cash fund balance, especially so if the school bus garage is not moved and constructed as early as planned. So I think we're in good shape. One thing, if I may, I'd like to elaborate on one other point regarding this. The promissory note in front of y'all is still under review by USDA.
I'm sorry, they actually sent us an email brick before we walked in, and they said so long as the authority, they said it was an authority decision.
Okay, well, there you go. Well, that's up-to-date information. You almost choked on the water trying to get that up. So that's good news. So what we would ask the board for is authorization for the chairman, and the Middlesex Water Authority chairman's already, I think, been authorized to execute an agreement where they can borrow the money, pay for the service, get the work done, and of course, be reimbursed when the USDA closes the loan out at the end.
With the chairman's permission, and if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, before you make a motion, also, I want to be clear with everything. It's 226,270, right? That's the amount of the loan.
Yes, sir.
And possibility of being paid back in 2024.
The guarantee that it will be paid back.
By, by 2024.
Yes, sir.
All right, I just want to be clear with the numbers and everything like that. Okay, you can go ahead with your.
I have a motion, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Do be seconded. Any further discussion?
To be clear, the motion was that we authorized the chair to sign a promissory note. Right, Heather?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. Greg, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Greg.
All righty, moving on to regular agenda items. Employee health insurance review, Mr. David Rupp. And this would be pages 73 through 85 in your board package.
I think everybody knows David. David is our health insurance consultant, usually rolls up his sleeves and combats with Anthem to get us the best renewals possible. He has done so again, just with local choice, and I think he's going to present on that.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Go ahead and advance me one, Matt, if you would. I want to give you all a little bit of a historical perspective on the health insurance program. This is a very important benefit to your employees. We are very generous here in Middlesex County. We pay the health insurance premium for our employees at 100%. Some of you may be on our program. So a little bit of history about our program. When I was hired in 2013, I moved us from Anthem to Coventry, now Aetna. We have done very well with Anthem on a direct basis. We have averaged low single-digit increases over the past five years. We have always gone to market every year to check our renewal with. our renewal with Anthem. And Anthem, up until this year, Anthem Direct has always been the most competitive. I was getting feedback, we're small enough with 59 folks on our plan. We don't get any data, we're part of a pool. So I don't get any data that I can give Betty and Matt, you know, an update on how the plan is running, but Betty shared with me that we'd had some sickness in our group and we were anticipating a tough renewal. And we got a 17% increase this year. Go ahead, Matt. So with a 17% increase in place, we went to market. We went out to Sickna, Optima, United Healthcare, all declined to quote because they could not compete with even the renewal at 17% we were getting from Anthem. Aetna did provide a proposal, again, you all were with, a predecessor of Aetna before we moved to Anthem in 2013. They provided a proposal, but they were not competitive. What I knew was going to be competitive this year was Anthem through the Commonwealth of Virginia. That program is called the Local Choice. It was competitive and I'll detail that in a moment.
Well, David, just speaking of that, I think the board's somewhat familiar. The state have, the state employees have state healthcare insurance. This is the local government's choice for essentially the same type of plan.
That's exactly correct. And I'll go into those details. Go ahead and click one more. The Local Choice, as Matt said, we get to piggyback off of the buying power of the Commonwealth of Virginia. State of Virginia is the largest buyer of health insurance in the state. They buy this benefit for about 140,000 employees. We get to piggyback off that as a local government. Our school division has been in the program for probably five years. We've done well in that program. And really, there's no, there's no magic here. It's just the volume buying power that the state has. We've looked at this program every year, up until this year, it was more advantageous for us to stay direct with Anthem. But this year, in a tough year, it's going to make more sense for us to move to the Local Choice. Another thing about this program is you all will be in a pool with groups between 2 and 99. We've experienced, on average, less than 5% increases year over year in this program. So I think not only this year, but years moving forward, I think this will be our best option. Wanted to make you all aware of this too. You all are currently on a December 1 renewal cycle. With, when we move to the state's program as a county government, we will have to be on a July 1 renewal cycle. So just so that everyone is clear, and I've been meeting with the employees today, we're going to move to this program, that's our proposal for December 1. We will run a short plan year this year. We will end our first plan year June 30. We will get a renewal from Anthem in the state in January of 2020, and then that will be in effect come July 1 of 2020. From there forward, we'll be on a July 1 through June 30 cycle. Does that make sense?
Chair, can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Mr. Rowe, are we saying we would potentially make a decision to switch now and switch again in July after a short cycle, or would we re-evaluate the market in June?
Mr. Coons, typically, and I'm going to share some of your, some of your bordering locality, some of their information with you in just a moment. Typically, once someone moves into this program, they tend to stay there. They tend to stay there. We can always market it if, every year if we're not happy with the result, but typically, most groups that go into the program tend to stay because the fixed costs, the administrative costs are lower by being in the program, again, because of the buying power of the state.
I'll try to hold my questions till I see more of the slides.
Okay.
You're probably going to hit on a lot of what I'm.
Hopefully.
One thing I want to highlight for the board too, is where we've had renewals that have fluctuated wildly with Anthem. Renewals are more gradual with Local Choice because I guess as part of being part of a local, larger pool of employees, so the increases are less dramatic. I would be very surprised, as David has said, that we get a renewal of 17% next year with Local Choice.
No.
In fact, it's more probable, we probably have the same renewal rate for next year until they get a full year's history on us, but.
Is this the same plan that the schools are on?
Exactly, Mr. Mansfield. It's exactly the same program that they're on. And I, and just for some perspective, well, I've got a slide on that, bear with me. Now, I'll give you a little bit of perspective. Go ahead, Matt. I don't know, this is, this is a little bit small to see on the PowerPoint projection, but what I wanted to let you all know is, without exception, these benefits are better than what we were offering. Couple of things. We are currently on an HMO platform with Anthem Direct. This will be on their PPO platform at Anthem. Anthem's the administrator. And all that really means is, that PPO network is the largest network of doctors and hospitals, not only in Virginia, but nationwide. So if our folks want to go to Duke, Johns Hopkins, Mayo Clinic, MD Anderson, wherever they want to go, as long as they accept the local Blue Cross plan, they're in network with us. The other interesting thing about our program is, up until this point, the county has paid for a $500 deductible medical plan for our employee at 100%. They have the ability to buy dental plan and a vision plan out of their own pocket at their expense. Our program with the state is a bundled program, so now the decision was made, there will be medical, dental, vision, all in this program, and that will be paid for by the county at 100%. And I can tell you, meeting with, with the employees today, that seems to be pretty well received. So I wanted to make you all aware of that.
Before we get too far away from this previous slide, I want to bring to the board's attention, every year because of our December 1 renewal date, we always get this information at the end of October, and it's always a struggle for Diane and David and Betty to work with the employees and try to make the deadlines in order to meet the renewal date, and especially in a situation like this where we have to shift. By going to Local Choice, the renewal information for the next or follow-on year will usually come in during our budget process and not off-cycle where we have to make all these mid-year adjustments. We usually will have this information in the spring, so that.
Actually, Matt, January, no later than February, you'll have this.
So absolutely, it gets folded into our budget process, so we don't have any more surprises in December.
So that's a really nice benefit. It's not, if that was the only difference, it wouldn't be compelling enough to take you over, but if everything else is compelling, that really helps us with budgeting. And this is the help, variable healthcare costs year to year are a big part of our budgeting woes.
Well, Mr. Coons, probably, Betty, you correct me if I'm wrong, probably behind payroll, it's either your number two, number three expense. It's either this or Virginia retirement system. So by being on that December cycle, you all have to finalize a budget July 1. We don't know what this is going to look like unless I get feedback from Betty about any sickness that we know of. So I think it's going to be helpful.
I think it's also for the employees getting such short notice to make a decision. I've seen the frustration two years in a row, you know, getting onto a different sickness would be very beneficial.
I agree. Any questions on the benefits? We good with that? All right, Matt?
Yeah.
All right. To me, one of the, one of the few negatives of moving to the program, if I can, if I can explain this fairly briefly. Today with our Anthem plan, we have five enrollment tiers. You can either be yourself, an employee only, an employee plus child, you can be employee plus children, employee plus spouse, or family. Commonwealth doesn't do it that way. They consolidate those five enrollment tiers down to three. So we're going to have winners and we're going to have losers in this scenario. And I've been working in this program for 20 years, have begged the folks at DHRM to expand to five enrollment tiers. They say the state doesn't do it that way, they're not willing to do it, they say it's in the code, it's actually not. But this is what we have to deal with. So what I, what I did, you can see clearly, the renewal that we received from Anthem is on the left-hand side. And to make this an apples-to-apples comparison, I added in what an employee would pay for our base dental plan, plus the vision plan, to try to give you the best apples-to-apples that I could. Look if you, the plan that we fund in full is the $500 deductible plan. If they, if we had stayed with Anthem, that your employees would pay $43.74 a month. Under our plan that we're proposing, that would go to zero. Thank you, whoever, Matt, is that you running?
Yeah, that's me.
Thank you, thank you. Look at the difference in the buy-up plan, the more copay-based plan. They would have paid 187.40. This year, beginning in December, they would pay $80. That is a huge win and candidly, the new buy-up plan is significantly richer, in my opinion, than the plan we would have offered. So the winners are those that take employee-only coverage, and that's 42 of our 59 people.
Vast majority.
Vast majority are going to win under this scenario. Those that cover just themselves plus their spouse, I mean, look at the rate difference, it's almost half of what it was. Same with family. And guys, we don't have any families that take our health insurance today because when you look at the cost of what that would be.
That's monthly cost.
It's prohibitive.
Yeah.
Folks would not have a paycheck left. Again, it's still expensive under the plan we're proposing, but it's a whole lot better than what it would have been. The two categories where there is going to be some abrasion, and I know Diane, Betty, everyone has tried to talk to these people individually. If you cover yourself plus a child, or if you cover yourself just with just your children, it is going to be more expensive. And just so you know, that's seven people that are going to be impacted negatively. I know Diane has met with them one-on-one and I asked today, the reception has seemed to be very positive.
Yeah, it's actually nine. And we've met with a vast majority of the individuals to give them to the council.
Do we know if any of them have options to get their health insurance through their spouse's works?
That's exactly the conversation Diane had. Can, can children go on spouse's plan? Could we get an individual plan for the, for the children? Just trying to help them alleviate some of this pain. Because again, 42 of the 59 folks that we cover are clearly going to make out better, but we were concerned about those seven, Matt says nine.
Yeah, yeah. We, Betty, Diane and I met with the affected individuals individually because we figured, we were talking about some sensitive subject. And to get a sense of how many may have spouses, several did, and they were going to look into the cost of having a spouse take on the children on their plan. But we also went one step further. We actually did a little background research to see, test the private market, so to speak, so if a parent wanted to get outside insurance coverage on their child, how much roughly that would cost. We were successful in contacting a couple. Betty had some comparisons. Of course, until the parent actually goes to the provider like Farm Bureau or many of the other providers and inputs the data on the child, you really don't know what the insurance policy is going to cost. But we gave them a range and gave them some options. It was very important for the three of us to sit down individually with the nine affected employees, explain why the county needs to make the decision they made, but also be there to support them and see what we could do to help expedite either them procuring another option or an alternative, or working with the spouse to get on, get their children on a spouse.
And we have to deal with, I call it an unfortunate fact, and that is the reason we have these benefits are for our employees.
Employees, yes.
And when it has been financially advantageous for them to bring dependents on, we've gladly had that, but we're at a, when, when you've got these kinds of increases on the vast majority, and you can save this much on the vast majority, I don't think we really have a lot of choices.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with Chairman Holman. Yes, sir. All right, Matt?
Be careful, you don't want to be heard agreeing with me.
Pardon me?
You don't want to be heard.
I don't want to be heard agreeing with you. I'll take my chance. How about that? I want to give you all a little bit of perspective. Have you all heard of this program before? I hope you have. So, Mr. Mansfield, Middlesex County Schools has been, when, when Middlesex hired me, I'm thinking that was five, six years ago.
It was 2012.
2012. That sounds like seven years ago, Mr. Walker. Seven years ago.
It's slipping by.
Time goes by fast. But I immediately moved them into this program. They were with Anthem, like you all today, fully insured, getting mid-20% increase renewals every year. Just so you know, your schools received a decrease last year and we're projecting a decrease for this year. They're big enough that I get data that I can analyze. Lancaster County's in the program. Richmond County and schools buy together, they're in the program. Essex County and Essex County schools separated July 1 of 2019, but both individually in the program. And just to give you a little perspective on rate action from last year, back up one more, Matt, if you would. We saw a decrease for your school division. Lancaster County got no rate increase. Richmond County and schools got no rate increase. Essex County nor Essex County schools received a rate increase. So I hope that gives you a little bit of comfort as well.
So you're guaranteeing that for us over the next.
I'm not.
Get a loan record, John.
Mr. Holman, that's the one I cannot, I cannot support that one. But I'm trying to give you a little bit of perspective here. It's the right place for this community to be. So next steps, we conducted enrollment meetings today. I met with many of your employees. Diane not only is collecting them, but she just delivered a stack of enrollment apps to me that I'm going to deliver to the state tomorrow so they can start keying these. It's important, this is a big change. Your employees value this benefit tremendously. We will have temporary ID cards, probably by the end of next week, that I'll send to Diane that she can email out to everyone on our plan. And then hard copy, plastic cards will go in the mail. Those folks will have those that enroll before the effective date of December 1. So that's, those are our plans. Mr. Walker, any questions for me?
The deadline is tomorrow to sign up, right?
It is, and that's driven because Diane has to have this loaded in payroll so that she gets her deductions right for the next paycheck, the next pay cycle.
Matt Rowe, if I were helping run a community and I was looking at rising healthcare costs.
Yes, sir.
And I was defending how I managed it to my constituency, and I said, the first thing I do is I make sure we're shopping regularly and we're getting expert consultation, okay? And then we're choosing wisely the best plan every, and then constantly reevaluating.
Evaluating every year.
Correct. And we make our decisions as we're going to here again today. Then what is my second and third step? And in my mind, what I'm telling my constituencies is, I'm trying to make sure my county employees are healthy, as much as I can from this seat, encouraging healthy behavior, et cetera. But is it also maybe not our responsibility to encourage folks that are using county healthcare insurance or health plans to consider using other resources if they're available to them? And what I'm driving at in particular is, I'd like in the next couple of months, as you get out of this busy season, for you to maybe provide us an analysis of what a typical employee on Medicaid has.
Medicaid or Medicare?
Medicare.
Medicare.
If I'm, if I'm eligible for Medicare and I have the option between Anthem or now Local Choice potentially and my Medicare, I'd just, I'd like to see that side-by-side comparison to see how much of a jump it is for us to ask employees to look carefully at that, to understand that delta. Maybe, maybe we can reduce the size of the pool that we're covering by having them choose other things that are available from governments that have more funding than us. Would you be able to run that and add that side-by-side?
Happy to do that.
I would suggest we invite David back to one of our preliminary work sessions on the budget.
And I guess buried in that suggestion, that that's my view, is the question, what else can we do about this? Because when I'm getting ready to do a town hall later this year ahead of our budget season, essentially what I'm saying is, before our departments come to us with requests for funding, I already know that inflation has occurred since we last budgeted. I already know that healthcare costs have changed and I know how much they've changed. So I can take on the expense side and already have a forecast for some expanding expense. I also know, because we have our composite index information back, that our real estate values have declined. So on the one hand, I have a growing pie and on the other end, I have a shrinking pie.
And that's, your composite index directly affects county schools' funding.
So we get all excited about that, but it's not good news for the rest of how we fund things. Because we're, we raised, we have taxes that are raised based on the property values in large part. And if those property values are diminishing, that's great that it gets us more funding for the schools, but it's problematic in that before I even hear from my departments, I know the expenses are higher and the revenues are lower, and my options are to cut services or raise taxes. I'm already there before I even talk to my department. So my question, is there anything else we should be doing about that part of the expanding pie over here on my expenses in terms of healthcare? You're our expert. Is, are we leaving any opportunities on the table?
By this move to the state's program, the Local Choice, we have gone 80% of the way in controlling those costs. And let me tell you why. Healthcare trends, John, you seem to understand this very well. Healthcare trends in the market, 10 to 12%. Where else do you find that rate of inflation anywhere else? And for you guys, this has been a large budget item that you really haven't had your arms around. And for you guys, this has been a large budget item, that you really haven't had your arms around. Because we set our budget in July, I don't even know what this is gonna be until October, what this number is gonna look like. Going to this program, you take what was a ten to twelve percent trend, or rate of inflation in healthcare, and the state, with the state, it's six and a half percent. So we're almost cutting that in half, just by moving into this program. We've lowered our fixed cost, or the cost to run this program, dramatically by moving to the state's plan. You know, you were talking about keeping your employees healthy, I was sharing with Matt and Betty, the way this program is rated, they're gonna look at all the groups that are between two and ninety-nine folks, and you all are gonna be put into a pool, they're not gonna look at your health experience anymore, okay? They're gonna look at your demographics. So your demographics, the age of your folks, are they male or female, and where do they live, what are their subcodes? And if your demographics are worse than the pool, you'll have a worse-than-average renewal. If they're better than the pool, you'll have a better-than-average renewal. We can't control our demographics. You know, we are, we are gonna age in place every year, females are more expensive to insure for health insurance than males, and where we live is where we live. So by moving into this program, I feel like I've gotten you a long way towards the goal you're trying to achieve.
I just had a change of jobs myself personally, and went from one healthcare provider to the other, and one of the transition things that I noticed is, one says they'll lower my deductible if I can prove that I do not use tobacco, or that I'm in a cessation program. Is there any, was there any, and is there any, in the one we're coming from, and the potentially one we're going to?
John, so I don't have any local governments that do this, but a couple of things. That's a wellness incentive, so I have some private sector, non-government groups that say, if you get an annual physical, and if your spouse is covered, if he or she gets an annual physical, and you certify that you're a nonsmoker, you pay a lower premium than the one that does not. So that's one way to do this. I just haven't had a local government make that leap yet, but, and the other thing too is, of course, we pay a hundred percent of the employee-only premium for our folks, which is a great, a great benefit.
But I guess I understand all that, and I don't think it's that progressive to be thinking this way, it's just looking at what the free market's doing, and if we already understand that if we're above the average, we're gonna pay more next year, and if we're below the average, we're gonna pay less. If there's anything we can do to help our odds at the casino, you know, you count cards every time if you can, right?
That's right.
Matt, help me with this, if recollection is correct, we've talked about the fact that as a group, city halls employees could get insurance at a lower rate than this group because of experience and age and so on, and we anticipated at some point that the cost of alternate programs would catch up with this, and we would join, and it just happened with this seventeen percent increase.
That's exactly correct.
This has been anticipated, and we've actually-
We've been talking about this for five years, Joe.
We've actually been, we've actually been doing above and beyond, John, to save money when it might have been easier from an administrative standpoint to just lap in with this earlier on, so.
Yeah, this was kinda during one of these, and we're finally with-
Seventeen percent just merged it real fast.
Seventeen percent pushed us over, we've looked at this every year-
Every year.
That I've been working with you guys, and this was the year, and I told you about this, knowing that there was a lot of sickness in the group, this would be the year we moved.
Yep.
But remember, we're part of the largest healthcare buying consortium in the state. Because, you know, there are folks, I don't know if you all familiar with the SAW Consortium up in Waynesboro, the state of Augusta, Waynesboro, they've gone together and bought health insurance. Why wouldn't you join the group of a hundred and forty thousand versus a group of a thousand?
Probably don't have as good a consultant.
Well, there you go.
Or their local claims history beats the state. Just one quick thing, Mr. Chairman, we are gonna be getting into the budget process, and John rightly so mentioned the composite index shift. That may not be because our property values are declining, it may just be that our property values are stagnant relative to the property values in the other parts of the state. Because the way that pie works, if the other parts of the state have property values that are increasing more dramatically than ours, that will be reflected in a lower composite index score for us. So I'm not a hundred percent our property values have declined. I would say it's probably a little bit more accurate to say that our property values are not increasing along with the rest of the state dramatically, or even keeping pace.
To just preserve my good name, it's still a decline relative to other jurisdictions.
It is, it's a decline relative to other jurisdictions.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
So do we require a motion?
I think so, yes.
There's several motions that were in your board packet. One thing that was a side note, I don't know if you want me to bring this up now, but-
What page?
Seventy-three. I had written about this in the memo, that as a side note, that the county, we had received back a refund from Anthem. And I don't, I'm not sure if the copy of that letter in here or not. But it had to do with, there's a requirement that, that the, let me see if I get this right, that if you, if you do not pay, if the insurance company does not pay out a certain amount of their benefits versus the premiums that are paid, then they have to refund a portion of that premium back. And that is what happened with their two thousand eighteen collections. They did not pay out eighty-five percent, I think it was, of the premiums that they collected towards benefits. So they refunded that back to the county, five thousand five hundred three dollars and seventeen cents. And Diane had to go back through all of the contributors to that. The majority of that premium was paid in by the county, because we paid, the county paid a hundred percent of the employee share. But a portion of it was also paid by employees that had their spouses or children on there. So one thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents must be refunded back to those employees, and then the remaining part stays with the county. So, in the list of actions that I have there for you, part of it has to do, part of the motions and actions that you need to take have to do with the insurance switching over to Local Choice, which is approving the adoption agreement that we have in the packet, and then also approving the budget supplement, so that we can refund that seven, eleven hundred dollars back, and then another budget supplement to apply the refund received and cover the additional costs.
I have a motion.
Would that be an adoption agreement motion?
That's, I'm gonna do all three at once, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Consolidation.
I move that we approve the adoption agreement and participation in the Key Advantage five hundred and two hundred and fifty plans with comprehensive dental, as offered by Local Choice, funding one hundred percent of the employee-only cost of the lower plan. I also move that we approve, within the same motion, of the budget supplement, so that one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and seven cents can be paid back to specific employees, and approval of a budget supplement to apply the refund received and fund the additional nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars needed to fund the cost of coverage for current employees, covered until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty? A budget transfer will be requested later to move these budget funds to individual department lines.
I'll second it. End of discussion.
And just, just another, this is, that nine thousand two hundred thirty-three is based on the current number of employees that we have, there might be additional coming on.
Right.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered.
David, thank you for your hard work on that.
Yes.
David, do appreciate it. Betty, I believe you're back on deck with some board and commission appointments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John said that he has information the schools are not gonna make it, and he's got the wherewithal to explain the budget request.
I spoke with-
Pardon me?
Superintendent Gretz, and he passes on his regrets, they came yesterday, and we're not prepared to come today. There are three appropriation requests, FY twenty twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. They are all simple federal funding pass-throughs, and the accounting is commensurate with them. One is the Carl Perkins Grant, that is seventeen, and you can see the kind of things they were funding with that, vocational equipment, capital outlay, travel, et cetera. Second one is Title one, two, three, four, five, and IDEA six eleven, Part B. Again, this is just us giving the federal funds that come to us. So this is pretty transactional stuff that we would normally approve. And then nineteen is, again, Title one, two, three, four, five, and IDEA six eleven, and IDEA six nineteen. If there aren't any questions, Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve appropriation requests FY twenty twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
I'd like to second that.
Motion duly seconded, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, John, sorry, I almost skipped over you. Betty, what have you got on board and commission appointments?
Actually, there's a budget supplement request on page eighty-six.
Eighty-six, here we go. Okay, I had lumped that in with, okay, I got you.
This is just to appropriate a refund that we received back, it wasn't really, it was where we paid an invoice that was also paid by Parrish and Partners, who we had paid also, so.
Clean up.
The company refunded us the money back, and I needed to put that back into the-
Got you.
Expense line.
Do we have a motion on twenty twenty dash twenty-one?
I move that we approve the-
It's number sixteen.
Budget supplement request FY twenty twenty dash sixteen.
Second it. End of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered, sir. We really don't have dialogue in this part of the meeting, I won't-
I guess not, but what we have-
If you'd like to address any one of us at a recess, we'd be happy to talk to you. Now we get to board commissions and appointments.
The, we have several openings on the Building Code of Appeals Board, that we have three openings, and we've only received one application back for that from Ray Birch, June. All of these terms expired, actually, October thirty-first, so if you knew anyone that would love to fill any of those, we certainly would take their applications, but in the meantime, if you would see fit to reappoint Ray Birch.
I'll make the motion for the Building Code.
Second.
Ray Birch.
Motion made, duly seconded, end of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did I miss a beat, because in my packet, I have budget supplement requests, other than twenty twenty sixteen, there's twenty twenty twenty-one miscellaneous refunds.
Yeah, it is another one.
That was, that was part of-
The healthcare.
That was part of the healthcare.
That was my motion, actually.
If you want to approve those supplements, you can, but it's a little redundant.
Thank you, sir.
Very well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just on the appointments for the Building Code appeals, I just wanna do a plug-in. David Self, our Building Code inspector official, he and I work with that board, and there is a real need for it. Essex County didn't have one, and they had to borrow ours, so it's not a board that-
They're not used often, but-
We're not used often, but when they are, they are very important, so if there are any people in your constituency, this is a time to drum them up, we really need them.
Yeah.
What you're also saying, though, is this is not a huge time commitment, this is almost like jury duty.
Pretty much.
Less frequent.
Except I think it's a little more, you know, a little more joyous when you get a note from me instead of that dread.
And just for the board's edification, we have worked with other counties around us, King and Queen and Essex, not the least of which, to see, pursue the possibility of forming a regional building appeals board, but there's some code issues with that, and it's not something that has a lot of legs under it at this time. So we're really depending on local contractors and other qualified people to step forward and serve.
And they have to, they have to fit into certain categories, you know, you have, like, William Rosenbaum was the engineer that was on that group, you have to have contractors.
Where are we shy right now? Like, if I'm going out to the market in my constituency, what am I looking for?
An engineer.
Engineer.
And general contractors, probably where Jimmy Walton fit into.
And there's one meeting a year, at a minimum for organization, and then as needed. We had one last year, we had two, because Essex needed us-
Homes for Essex.
And then one for us, so in three years, we've had, we count on one hand the number of meetings. So it is a very minimal time commitment. Thank you, sorry.
Betty, and as much you haven't mentioned it, we are up to capacity on the Airport Committee at present.
Yes.
All right, okay. All ready then?
Those terms expire in August.
So we will have some vacancies coming up in August, or at least a vacancy?
Yes.
Okay?
I believe so.
Mr. Walker, have you got some surplus vehicles and equipment to sell?
Yes, sir, I wanted to brief the board on this matter. We are, the sheriff, myself, and social services have utilized the expertise of Enterprise Rental Car with current leasing of vehicles, they seem to be the best deal around, as far as leasing goes. And a service they have offered the county has been to receive surplus vehicles, and actually put them out to bid on our behalf. But in order for us to bid those surplus vehicles, high-malletage vehicles, the vehicles we have parked down at the storage yard, the board would first need to surplus those vehicles in order for us to do so. We feel like when we've put vehicles out in the past for bid, we get marginal, if not token, response. Enterprise puts that out to bid more robustly throughout the state, and really the region, and they have apparently been very successful in receiving better prices. One caveat to this is, if Enterprise does receive a price that we feel is low, we don't have to accept it. We can then choose to take that same vehicle out to bid ourselves. It's gonna be very unlikely that we get a better price locally than they can get regionally and statewide. And I think Betty's got the list of the surplus vehicles and equipment that we'd like to surplus. Betty, would you like to go through the list, any, or it's pretty much self-explanatory?
Page nanny.
As you can see, we've got one nineteen ninety-eight with two hundred and thirty thousand miles.
Yes.
So what we're looking, go ahead, Betty.
So we would like to offer the surplus vehicles, have you declare them as surplus, and then we would offer those to Enterprise to offset the cost of our rental payments that we have on other vehicles that we are currently running through them. And then the other equipment, we will run an ad in the paper, put those out for anyone, citizen that would like to bid on those.
Right. And one caveat or additional point on this, I have invited the Enterprise staff to potentially attend a budget work session of the board, to brief the board on their leasing program and how they function. It's a very lucrative program that we feel, well, very beneficial program and lucrative for us to engage their services in leasing some of these vehicles. And I think the sheriff's taken advantage of it on one vehicle, we've taken advantage of it on two for social services, and then David Layman's truck as well.
Madam County Attorney.
Excuse me, do we publish this to the public, and?
Enterprise publishes their bid to the public, and we can assist them in publishing that locally, to get local bids through their bidding of these vehicles.
Okay, we, or Enterprise publishes it, but does, how can the public bid on a vehicle if they would like to?
They have a process that's advertised with their bids on how an individual like you or I, or anyone here, could submit a bid on that particular vehicle. And I believe, if my memory serves, they have, we have the vehicles garaged or stationed at one centralized location, allow people to go by and inspect it. to allow people to go by and inspect the vehicle. It's all part of their process.
Madam County Attorney, is, would one motion be in order to declare these items surplus and to engage Enterprise on the automobiles?
I think that's appropriate as long as it's a comprehensive motion.
The chair will entertain a motion to that extent.
I'll say, I'll make that motion.
And I'll, I'll second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. All right, we've been zipping right along and now we get to the county administrators update.
I'll try to be brief because I know I'm standing between the board and dinner and a closed session that I think we need to have. It's my understanding though that the council coming in from Richmond may be running a little bit late, so we do have some additional time. We'll discuss that later. You have a copy of my report in your packet. One item of interest that I would, I know that Hampton Road sanitation sewer discussions have been somewhat lagging. We are making some final adjustments to the preliminary engineering report. We've been in debate and council with them on that for the last couple of months. And we have a final revised master service agreement that is back at HRSD for their review and approval. Once those two items are in place, it's still my intention to invite Hampton Road Sanitation District staff to a work session of the Board of Supervisors to brief them on the PER and the master services agreement, which you will get of course before the work session and any questions the board may have on the projects. At this point in time, we are in the holiday season and it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to have that work session before Christmas. And with the election and the new board members coming on, it may be more appropriate to wait and hold that work session after the new year. That's kind of where we are with that process.
That would suit me.
I'm very optimistic that HRSD will have the work completed and be in a position to better present on the matter after the first of the year. And as mentioned earlier, we had a meeting planned with Lancaster County to further evaluate the possibility of an authority. We have canceled that meeting on Friday and that will be postponed until after the first of the year as well. With that being said, if there are any questions about the review.
I would just ask if we are going to push HRSD out until January. We firm that up now so it doesn't start to slip into February because what seems to happen in the private sector as well is it used to be we'd take a day off for Christmas, now we take off the fourth quarter for the holidays. And it's like, you know, let's, let's keep the ball rolling. But I understand the other reasons why January might be more appropriate, but let's, let's lock it in now so that it's not pushed out any further.
What I was going to try to do, Mr. Coates, is, is align the, the work session with water and sewer because we usually have a strategic update with our budget calendar, which I hope to have in front of the board in December for approval. So we can outline not just that work session, but all of the budget work sessions at that point in time. But it's duly noted and I, I think it's a, I think it's an accurate assessment. What generally happens with state, federal, and quasi-state and federal employees is they have so much annual leave built up that they lose if they don't take by the end of the calendar year. What happens between really now and the first of the year is so many people are out on annual leave or, you know, enlarging the holiday season, it's very hard to get, get things done. Now, I can't speak to that in terms of HRSD's scenario. I just know from past experience on how long it's taken to work through the master services agreement that, yeah, I wouldn't want to, I want to under-promise and over-deliver as far as timeframe regarding that. I will give you an update on the Cook's Corner project. Of course, you can see the water system going in. We hope to have that complete in the next couple of weeks. The contractor ran into a little bit of a hiccup on the bore. Basically hit some very compacted dirt. It was a little bit of a challenge to get through. And of course, there was some additional cost that was incurred for boring the conduit under the road or taking the conduit under the road parallel to the water line. We'll have more of an update on that in the months to come. But the system should be in and I think functioning by the end of the year. With regard to sewer, Hampton Road Sanitation District in the next couple of weeks, as my report states, will, will be going out to bid on the preliminary engineering on the interceptor main between basically Urbana and Matthews County's forest main. And it's my understanding that they're still moving forward with the collection system at Cook's Corner in order to have that deployed by the June 30th timeframe that we've set to be able to serve the grant-related facilities. And if not, they've agreed to do some pump and haul that would carry us over in any interval time period. So that's basically all I had, Mr.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Man, I also noted in your report that you had an update on the multipurpose path and some of the timing there suggesting that we may find out by the new year if we've made it to the next round. And then I spoke with Mark Longus this morning and he said if we might get to the next round, we would then find out somewhere around July if funding for the multipurpose path would come through sometime in October of next year.
That's accurate.
Okay, I just, I wanted to put that out there because that's, that's one of the questions that I get a lot and I'd like for more constituents to come and watch the video and hear that information. So I wanted to put that out there. I'm glad it was in your report.
Yes, sir. And just elaborate a little bit, since you opened that door, I'll walk through it. I think we have a very strong application. I think in many ways, having the match already in the budget and having some idea of where we would like some of these lines, or excuse me, some of these lanes, multipurpose lanes. And having a little bit more of a framework of what we want to do. I think it makes our application very strong and very likely to be funded. Of course, I can't promise that. It really depends on what we're up against. But the potential comprehensive nature of this project, yes, it's starting in Deltaville, but it ultimately could be expanded all the way up to Jamaica, to the racetrack. And of course, to Urbana and to Topping and along the stretch of Route 33. I think it makes it a very compelling project and one that hopefully will get some traction.
And I'd like to add one that was on all five supervisors' list when we were looking at budget things last January. So I have a number of folks in the general public that do not think this is a good idea at all. And I think we all need to get the word out there of how well these work in areas where tourism is the industry. And that's really what we're about and we need to be sure to get that word out there because we don't want, don't want anybody to think we're spending money foolishly. This is something that anybody that's ever, any locality that's ever put one of these pass in has, has thought it was the greatest thing and has helped them immensely and no regrets, so.
On a less positive note, I also noted that you had the Mill Creek Landing update in, in your update. I'm catching a lot of heat for that Cholden DGIF facility. I've spoken with the same people you're talking to. I've spoken with Keith Hodges. That's not just for sportsmen and if it was just for sportsmen, it needs to be open. But it's for our working watermen and I'm not picking on you, but you put it in your report and I just, I want to go on the record as saying is I'm not content with DGIF's response.
Duly noted.
If you recall, we had them come before us and give us a report and they would not do any Band-Aid dredging. They want to study the whole scenario, put in new groins and.
Well, they don't have money.
And they, oh, that was my next, they want to do all of that rather than just, just to dredge it, which I can understand, but they don't have any money to do that and I don't know when they will have money.
They don't either.
Yeah. Does that conclude your remarks, Mr. Walker?
I would just add one final comment on to the multipurpose path. There's been a lot of articles and I think the board may have been shared some of these articles from the EDA and Michelle Brown regarding the, the rise of the millennials, if you will. I can't say it any better than that. And one of the things that millennials generally look for when they purchase anywhere is walkability, pedestrian-friendly communities. It's one thing to kind of keep things the same and preserve the rural character of the community. And of course, our conference plan definitely speaks to that. But it's another to provide more pedestrian-friendly communities, especially in some of our vibrant village clusters that we've identified. It could be just as important as providing water and sewer infrastructure to these areas to stabilizing and perhaps increasing future property values in those areas and livability and desirability, if you will. We are a tourist-dependent community and having these multipurpose paths definitely would add to that. But it's also a quality of life issue for our year-round residents, having access to those things. So they are very important. And I commend the board. You're exactly right. One of our strategic work sessions last year, that point seemed to be a nexus on all five board members' minds. And I don't think that will differ with the incoming board, but we'll see.
Madam County Attorney, what do you have for?
Very briefly, just wanted to say thank you. I attended my fall 2019 Local Government Attorneys Conference. It was in Kingsmill, fall and spring one, and they rotated around the state. So next time I'll be driving a couple hours out west, southwest. But it was a very good conference. Normally I have some interesting cases to share or I would say the highlights were, there's some interesting, interesting from a legal perspective about eminent domain case in Culpeper with the highway department and with the court deemed important evaluation that I think is going to be really interesting to see. I believe it's going to be appealed, but we'll see. It may not be. The other highlight was some new litigation tactics that are going on. Just, you know, keeping myself up, up to date and educated. But it's always good to meet fellow local government attorneys. And I did have numerous people come up to me and speak highly of their work in working with Bowman and their Eastman Acquisition Services. In particular, there's a current project going on in Northern Virginia that Bowman's helping them with. And the attorney was very frank with me. It wasn't one of those just to give lip service. So that gave me a great sense of comfort to know that we're working with a very competent agency in that matter. But thank you. Lots of good information and I enjoyed it.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to unfinished business. I'll start with Mr. Mansfield and we'll work around the table. What have you got, Pete?
Nothing fantastic, other than I, I would like to find out whether HRSD has reevaluated how soon they can connect the line from the Urbana plant to the Matthews interceptor main. So could, could I ask that our county administration do that?
Yes, sir. Be happy to do so. Their target, if I may, their target date is still August 2024, but anything we can do to expedite that timeframe, we want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Jesse?
I don't have any.
I don't have anything. Mr. Coates?
I'd like to address some of the comments from the public. In particular, I think Mr. Kimbrough's been up here a couple of times talking about the Men Hayden limit. And it's my opinion that Omega is willfully violating a limit that is meant to protect a resource that drastically impacts our community. If all this that we're talking about tourism being a critical pillar industry for us is true, then I do think we have a responsibility to give notice to the governor and to the state that if there are rules to protect our bay and its fishery and they're being willfully violated and there are no teeth in the legislation for the state to do something about it, I feel that they've absconded. And I would ask your permission to draft such a letter to the governor and to our newly elected officials at the House of Delegates and the Senate to let them know that Middlesex County is being impacted by one corporation that is willfully violating the science that is behind that fishery. And it's, it's having an impact on our local business and we'd like to see the state take some sort of action to either put this in the hands of the marine resource people or, or somewhere that Omega's going to feel a need to comply with what the science tells us about how to protect our bay.
Madam County Attorney, could this be by consensus or would we need a motion?
So in past, when you've had these situations come up and of course, this is at the board's discretion, I'll pick on Mr. Mansfield. He's asked to write certain letters in regards to the paper mill, as you'll recall. And what the board did in that instance was he prepared the letter, the board reviewed the letter and then decided whether it would endorse it collectively as the Board of Supervisors or if he would have to send it individually, so.
So I would ask then, do we have a consensus for John to author this letter? That's what you're offering.
I'm asking if you'll allow me to author it, have legal review it and then bring it to you.
Bring it, bring it in for approval.
Have you vote on whether it's ready to.
Okay, we have consensus for that and then we'll, we will approve your draft after it's passed legal.
And John, apparently there's 52 other letters that came out of herds.
I will have some letters to, to sort of take as a template, but I'm, I'm contemplating this obviously not as a citizen alone, but as representing the county. It is a county dependent on tourism and saltwater fishing and all that goes with it. If you can get out in a boat out of, out of my district, sorry, sorry to be today.
Okay. Is that it, John?
Yeah.
Kathy, I'm, will get you on double duty because we'll start you with unfinished and then you go to new and we'll come back this way.
I don't have either one.
None?
No.
John, new.
I thought I just did new. I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I am good. Mr. Jesse?
I'm good.
Mr. Mansfield?
Good.
All right, we'll keep this rotation going. Supervisor comments and reports, Pete, would you like to start off?
Yeah, I don't do it.
Okay.
Only report I have that I did at T is the Urbana Oyster Festival. Very well attended. Wasn't a record crowd, but you know, a lot of nonprofit organization did, did raise some good money. And also I think was the Quan, was it the Quanis that?
The Lions.
The Lions came back with their. With their oyster fritters and everybody was talking about that because they missed it last year. And then we had some, you know, as you know, election forums and I was busy with that, so I missed some of my meetings.
Very good.
Except for me.
I didn't have this as an original comment, but we have folks from the neighborhood around the airport represented here tonight. And I just would like to, as a, a member of the Airport Committee, address some concerns there. When, when the news first got out or the word first got out that we were looking at potentially extending and realigning that runway, the realignment was going to carry approaching departing aircraft out over the water, not the campground. So what we've done is worked in the direction of making the airport safer by having the end of the airport be, the end of the runway be out over the water and have a longer runway, which gives you more room for, for error if that, if that were to occur. At the time that we had that meeting, the terminal building was jam-packed full of people and it seemed to be everybody was in favor of, we had nobody leaving there that was thinking that this realignment was a bad idea. And, well, I take that back. We had one citizen who's, has a house on, on the other side that was going to be a few degrees closer to it, that voiced some concerns. So I just want to make sure we understand that we're moving towards improving and making more safe the airport and not, not the, not the other direction. All right, events. I attended the DCA Forum, obviously. The Colonial Seaport Foundation Oyster Roast where they're, I get, I get sloop and schooner mixed up, but it's a beautiful sailing vessel that is very old that they're, they're rehabilitating. And it's been years in progress and it's getting to the point now where the bones are good and the, the finish is going on. So you really can see, really can see what they're doing. Had a joint Budget and Finance Committee meeting with the schools. Attended the Holly Point Seafood Festival, the Oyster Festival Foundation Dinner, the Oyster Festival itself. Middlesex Water Authority had a meeting. We also had the NAACP Forum for Candidates and the One Community Under God Group of Churches that met in Urbana at the Firehouse. And if you haven't ever done that, I've done it the last two years in a row and it's, it's quite an event. And if you, if you're so inclined, that's a, that's a good event to go to. Not about wraps up everything I did.
I'll just have two comments and Wayne stole my thunder a little bit. I got to volunteer at the Lions tent and it was, they were back for, you know, after a year missing. And I'm not a lion, but they reached out to a lot of different organizations and, and asked for help to get that back up and running. And it, it brought tens of thousands of dollars of money into the, into the Lions' war chest, I'm sure. And it is so good to see a reconstitution of one of those philanthropic organizations that are so critical to our community. So that was a lot of fun and I, I had no clue oyster fritters were that popular. People were coming around. I mean, it was like the second coming. And my other comment is I, I've, I've had trouble getting citizens coming to town halls. It's, it's, it started out, there, there was some interest and it's tapered a bit. So I think I may try to reach out to a radio station, one of our local radio stations and try to do a. and try to do a town hall over the radio so that people don't have to leave their homes and they can just dial in with their questions. I've noticed Rob Whitman does something like that with the robo-call. It's a little more complex than I'm capable to set up. But, you know, I'm saying this in a public meeting just so that I can solicit some feedback from the community. And, you know, if I hear none, I'm going to try it, and I'll share with you the results. And as always, what I'm hearing in my town halls, I'll be happy to share with all of you because it's, I think we all agree, we're always looking for the feedback, and there's a number of different ways to do it. But I just wanted to let you know I'm going to be trying something different, hopefully.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I too was involved with the Oyster Festival reception and the festival day. And I would like to commend all the volunteers and the sponsors who make that happen. It's the kind of event that if you didn't have it, it would be very difficult to create and bring that many people to Middlesex. And the weather was really cooperative. So, and our Virginia River Realm Promotion that, you know, funded in part by the county, I think was very effective in facilitating that whole event. So kudos to all those involved. And I should thank Urbana, too, for their hospitality. It's not always easy to have that many people in your town, and it was a nice day. The Steering Committee that is exploring and pursuing options for a private day placement for students who need special education, who are in our schools and cannot be served within our schools, is proceeding, and they will have another meeting in December. But that is moving toward a solution there, and there should be more details coming up. I also wanted to recommend, the VACO does a community planning course. It's like an eight-week course that I completed last week. And a good bit of it is on the comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is due for an update. The last time it was updated was 2015. And so, you know, it behooves us to kind of bone up on comprehensive plan. A lot of the things that we've pursued as goals in the last couple of years have been supported by a comprehensive plan. And that is not the case in every county. I learned that. Also, Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, we had a presentation from a task force from the governor's office that is creating a coastal resilience master plan. So they're collecting a lot of data on flooding and other storm-related damage or just shoreline damage, storm or not, really. And it was very impressive, the elements involved. And one aspect that they are promoting as, or including, I should say, as incentivizing some spending to help your community be resilient is your financial standing, bond ratings, and insurance coverage as all being favorably impacted when a community is proactive in dealing with that. We don't have, obviously, a lot of urban areas that are submerged, but it does relate, some of the surveying and information is trying to account for damage to septic systems, which can be irreparably harmed by storm surge, I'm told. I think that's pretty much it.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one item.
I'm sorry, you didn't get it in time.
Well, the reason is, it was at the jail board meeting this morning. So it was late breaking, and I forgot it. But we meet every other month, and what I've noticed in a year and a half is there is a trend in, it's very difficult to find security personnel. It's very difficult to even find the nurses that they need in the Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center. And it's a function, very simply, of they're underfunded. So this is well before we even get into the budget season, and I don't know if they're going to come and ask for more, the same, less, I don't know. But what we talked about, and all the sheriffs in the five participating counties got reelected last night. So it's the same people I've been talking to, there's no change there. But the problem in particular with the security personnel at the Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center is we don't have enough applicants. Right now, they're actually, all the sheriffs, to a man, are considering and have agreed to allow people with longer beards and tattoos to be applicants. Whereas before, that really was not a part of the pool that they wanted to consider. They're having to broaden what they, their choosiness, if you will, because at $35,000, there's just not enough people coming to fill the positions.
So that makes me horrible, ma'am?
I told them that their board had already improved since they've relaxed that restriction. But the point here is, it's always going to be hard for us to find money. And it's not just us, it's four other counties in this situation. But in the case of the nurses, they require seven to fully staff the facility 24/7. They had gotten down to two. And they just, they said, you know what, we missed it. We need to increase it, and they came up with an increase, you know, six months ago. And it was almost in passing that the superintendent mentioned that we already have six nurses, and we think we're about to hire the seventh. So, you know, and Tom Schwartzwalder was sort of tongue-in-cheek. He's like, well, we already knew that that worked. If you pay more, you get more applicants. So that's obvious. But my point, bringing all this up to you, is what I asked the sheriffs to do, because only Sidney Johnson from Essex, Tom Schwartzwalder, and myself typically are at the jail board meetings, although administrators or supervisors from each of the five counties are invited. I asked those sheriffs, I really think it's time for you to go back to your jurisdictions and get either the county administrator or a board member to come to these meetings, because we have to regionalize in terms of, you know. Part of the problem is if we go up at the security center, the sheriffs are all upset because now they have to go up, and they have to go back to these boards and ask for more money. And they know how hard it is for us to go out there and ask for more money. And so I'm not meaning this as a scheme, that all of us are going to go do this together or anything like that, but we need to be starting to have a more regional discussion, specifically as it pertains to law enforcement and security. Because if you look at the net outcome of this, is we're relaxing who we're hiring to these positions. We're not at full employment in the positions that we have authorized. And what our law enforcement people do for us is make that look seamless. But in the meantime, there's a lot of stress on those departments. And you can see it in the superintendent's eyes at the Regional Security Center. And that's something that, before I was elected, I'd never been in that place. I didn't want to go in that place. That's one of the county services that I'm glad they provide for other people, in all seriousness.
When you take that tour and they shut that metal door behind you?
It's something.
And my stomach was in knots for two days, because I knew I couldn't leave unless they were going to let me out.
But the point is, there's a unique perspective that we have up here that we have to relate to, not just our constituents, but those of the other four counties participating. And I think we need to make sure we're coming up with a strategy between those different law enforcement agencies to make sure we're fully staffed or staffed appropriately, or if there's anything we as a region can do to help them. Maybe it's not going to the constituents, maybe it's going to the state and saying, we have a real problem here, and we need additional funding to make sure that we are fully hired in these positions. So I just wanted to let you know that's something that I've asked the different counties through their sheriffs to try to get more involved in, so that we can tackle this as a region.
Very good. That should conclude everybody's comments and reports. We are about to go into closed session. Madam County Attorney, am I correct in letting the public know that there should be no actionable items coming out of this? Or no?
I would agree with that.
Okay. So there's no actionable item coming out of this closed session. And immediately following the closed session, we will be recessing for dinner before we reconvene at 7:00 PM. So I don't know of any reason why you'd want to wait around all that time. And I just try to minimize your waits if I can figure out ahead of time what we need to do and what we don't. So we will accept, you will read that motion that I can't ever remember, and somebody will motion it.
Mr. Chair? So, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and AA8. This is for consultation with legal counsel, staff, and consultants pertaining to the pending claim and litigation style James M. Johnson versus Keith M. Ruxell, Middlesex County Board of Supervisors, Marky Holt III, Wayne H. Jesse Senior, Robert L. LaBeauf, Peter W. Mansfield, and John D. Miller Jr. And where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Still move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Yeah, red button's on.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to certify the following statement. To the best of the members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which the closed session was called or considered or discussed in the closed session.
So move. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
So I think the only thing I would acknowledge, Mr. Chairman, is that Andrew McRoberts is going to be assisting us in this matter. He's with Sands Anderson, and we will continue to keep you posted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that will put us in recess.
Thank you.
All right.
Rising time has it at 7:00 PM, so we're ready to reconvene our monthly Board of Supervisors meeting with three public hearings. David, are they all good in the order that they're presented to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we'd like you to come up and tell us about the first one.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. This is rezoning application 2019-02. It's, the request is for amendment of previously approved proffers for the proposed Healy's Mill Plantation subdivision, Tax Map Parcel 37-39. The acreage is right around 573 acres. The original proffers allowed the property to be developed into a maximum of 303 residential, single-family lots. The applicant, excuse me, the applicant is requesting that the current proffers in approved concept plan be eliminated and replaced with amended proffers that allow construction of one principal dwelling, together with accessory buildings and structures on that particular parcel. We can see further division or subdivision of the property shall be prohibited until such time that revised proffers and concept plan are submitted to the Middlesex County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors for consideration pursuant to that code section. The property is currently zoned residential, and it's generally located in Harmony Village area, although it does span back over almost to Stormont Road. A few narrative, there's basically a narrative that was, kind of reiterates what was just stated in the application language. We can see there's several overhead views. These are, this is directly from our GIS that shows the tax map parcels. Actually, these parcels are, this is actually one parcel. The, this, for some reason or another, commissioner's office has this put into the easements as property, and that's not quite correct. There again, you can see this overhead has the aerial imagery added in. So you can see it's mostly farmland, some forestry. Of course, this is the current zoning as it exists. We can see this particular piece is zoned residential. We have some residential to the south, LDR to the southwest, a little village community to the northwest, and some general business to the east a little bit. And future land use pretty much correlates with the current land use map. Very little change there. Mixed use represents village community, if somebody was asking, if somebody's wondering about that, where's future land use is residential. This shows, this overhead shows the area, the conservation easements. And the pink area depicts a resource protection area. I've got a better narrative of this overhead a little bit further in the presentation. You can see the only area that's left for development would be that perimeter, the northern perimeter of the property and the western perimeter of the property. This is oriented due north and south, so. Of course, the request is for the amendment of previously approved proffers, accepted by the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors. The property is currently subject to proffers created as a result of the rezoning of the property from low-density rural to residential. At this time, the applicant just wishes to construct one single-family dwelling. In order to construct this dwelling as desired, current proffers must be amended or removed.
David, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
If it was approved for 303 residential, why couldn't you just put one residential and stop there without going through all this?
When you read the proffer language, and you get into, I can show that to you.
That's all right, as long as there's a reason, because I'm just curious.
We'll get to that a little further in the presentation. The current proffers require that any development, and that development is the key operative word, development is really any type of development, construction of homes, roads, any of that would come under that definition, has to conform to that conceptual plan and the recorded proffers. So essentially, if he, if he came in with the plan and the ability to build the roads, and as you can see with the proffers, there are about 23 proffers, he would have to adhere to those as well, because they are of record. He could build a home on there, but that would be, that's not the intent. I mean, to build, to go through those, the cost of building the infrastructure and associated with one home may be, it's unnecessary. So. So a quick history on the property. Originally, a court order, the proffers were recorded with the court order. Notice Exhibit A, proffers applicable to Healy's Mill Plantation. Word in that instrument number, that was back in 2009. So we're right at 10 years, and you can see that nothing's really happened with the property as far as development. Right on the coattails of that redevelopment, Mr. Rourke conveys 120 acres to a conservation easement. So the conservation easements limit the development of the property. Four years later, he conveys another portion to the conservation easement. And then in 2016, Mr. Rourke conveys the property to Delaware Corporation. I want to note that Hartfield Green has been pulled out of this conversation because it has its own set of proffers. And it was part of the original, quote-unquote, Zandler Plan. But it's been developed, those lots are in place, and those proffers, board members have been mended several times since that time. This is, and oddly enough, the Zandler Plan that's actually approved is somewhat hard to put your hands on right now. I looked through the many boxes that we have. This was the previous plan prior to the court action that had, I believe, 370, had more homes with it. The next, whoops, the next one, this next is, I think, the revised Zandler Plan, after Mr. Rourke had placed several of the easements on it. This was submitted in conjunction with his request to, the yellow portion was, he had planned to put into a wetlands easement. That didn't quite work out. So that's showing the remainder of the Zandler Plan that would be left for development prior to the dedication of the conservation easement on the remaining piece that pretty much killed the whole thing. This particular narrative shows, or overhead, if you look at the area in white, that's the area that's all in conservation easement. That other area, you can see heading north and easterly, is all RPA feature. The hatched area represents the only area remaining on that piece of property that's available for development. So when the applicant came in and we had some initial conversations, we had a lot of difficulty with how to proceed with this. The, if we removed the, if we completely went back to low-density rural, the property was completely undivisible, because all the division rights with LDR have been exhausted. So in order for him to have any future use with this property and the county have possible tax base out of this piece of property, we had to leave it residential. So through these meetings, I conveyed to Mr. Ward and Mr. Barber, said, this is fine, but we can't remove these proffers without some type of protections for the county. What happens, you have to submit a new plan to go to the board for them to look at. So in response to that, he basically said, I do not at this time wish to develop this property, nor may I ever want to develop this property. And I do not want to go, you know, at this time, present a concept plan, because he really doesn't have any plan to do anything with it. So we came up, they, the applicant proposed that. So we came up, they, they, the applicant proposed that what would happen is if this property were ever developed, there's a stipulation in the new proffers that would require the applicant to come before the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors with the concept plan and new proffers that address whatever development happens on this property that correlates with the development prior to being able to divide it into additional lots. Now, that doesn't necessarily dismiss the fact he could do a family exempt subdivision, which is, of course, exempt from some of those code requirements. But any division of this property, and the proffers plainly state this, would require that particular, that they come forth with this plan. In addition to the public process, that would be a public process, it would also require major subdivision approval. So these are the proffers that are recorded to date. You can see, as I was stating, that first, that first one, that first item is the, is the, really the catch. It's the one that says any development has to be done in substantial conformance with the Zandler Plan. So he would have to start building that infrastructure and have some, he would have to start working towards that achievement. He would have to get major subdivision approval and go through all that for one home. So that's why we're here today to discuss this amendment. You can see there's other, there's other items in these proffers that deal with architectural standards and use of the lake and, you know, all the things that would usually go with a 300-lot subdivision. The new proffers, proffer number one is, these are submitted by the applicant. These are what have been submitted for consideration. The first proffer item is just, it's informative, it's just bringing down a property description to, to give a rough idea of what properties we're talking about. Whenever you have rezoning, you're talking about properties. In a rezoning case, you want to be able to describe the properties that are, that are being considered, so you want that, that particular component. The second item is obviously, they're, they're gonna, if adopted or if approved tonight, the original proffers would become null and void. They'll, they'll be taken off, off for consideration. Third item, this was discussed too, there was some, you always, my understanding is there's the possibility that the lakes could be used for emergency services in a case of an extreme emergency. So the county retains that ability to get to that lake if necessary to draw water out for emergency purposes, fires and that type of thing. For, this is the reason, he's submitting these proffers is so he can construct a home. He wants to construct a home for his son, so. The fifth, fifth item is what I spoke about earlier. At any time, with the exception of a family exempt subdivision, anytime they want to come back with a division, they have to come back to the Board of Supervisors, or the planning commission first, then the Board of Supervisors. The public hearing will be held pursuant to the proper code. Public, all the neighbors get to see what's being proposed, and they can weigh in during public comment section. And, of course, that's a continuation of five. Hartfield Green, as stated before, is not involved in this or restricted in any manner by any amendment of these proffers. So they've been, like I said, amended several times before, and they'll stay intact. So we wanted to make sure there's no confusion there, so. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment 2019. I believe that should be '02, I'm sorry, the typo. And, Mr. Chairman, that, one more minute. The, okay. The planning commission voted unanimously with one absent and one abstention to recommend approval of 2019-02, so.
Supervisors have questions of David before we have public comment? No questions?
Thank you, sir.
That concludes my presentation. Yes, sir, thank you.
At this point, we will open the floor up to public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, direct your comments to the Board of Supervisors, and please limit them to three minutes unless you're representing four or more people, in which case you can have 12 minutes. First speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, staff, my name is Jimmy Ward. Telling the lawyers that speaking three minutes, that's difficult, but I do the best I can. First of all, my client does not want to build 303, 303 buildings. He just wants to build one house. Somehow, that got misinterpreted in the paper when we came to the planning commission. If you look, you'll see that there were 573 acres, which gave an opportunity to build 303 residences. However, as you can see, Mr. Rourke put two conservation easements on there that equaled 461.27 acres. According to the conservation easement, regardless of anything else, it can only be five houses built on those conservation easements, and it can only be five subdivisions of that property. So you can only have five residents of them. So you only have 20% left to develop, if you wanted to develop it, and you can see that there's going to be some restraints on development because of the RPA and also because of the cost of the infrastructure. My client does not want to develop it at this time. All he wants to do is build one home for his son on the property. And as, as David very eloquently put, if, according to the proffers, you can see, number one, that the fire department can get into the area and take water from the lakes to fill up the tankers when, when necessary. The most important thing is if he does want to develop it, or if his children or somebody else wants to develop it, they've got to come back to David, they've got to come back to the planning commission, they've got to come back to the Board of Supervisors and get their plan approved. So at this juncture, the only thing, when we finish here tonight, if we get the approval, which we hope we do, he'll have the right to build that one home on that 573 acres. Anybody wants to build a home in the future on, he wants to subdivide it, you got to start all over. You got to come to him to submit the plan, you got to come to the planning commission, you come to the Board of Supervisors, then you have the opportunity for a public hearing and for everybody to speak. There's a whole lot more I'd like to say, but I will try to keep it three minutes.
You, you can have some latitude, since you're representing the.
Well, what I, I think I've said most of it. If you can see, he just wants to build one house for his son, and there's plenty of protection for the county if there's any subdivision in the future. Any type of family exemption, you've got a corporation, you can't have a family exemption with a corporation to begin with. And that leaves you to tax purpose, tax questions about, you know, how do you do that? So that's not even an issue right now. The only thing is the one, one particular building that he'd like to build for his son. The planning commission voted nine to nothing, nine to zero, I should say, to approve the plan as presented. The staff has recommended that the plan be approved, and I, on behalf of Delaware Corporation and Mr. Barber, would request the approval of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ward. Any citizens wish to address the board on this subject?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Krebs needs to approach the podium one more time.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This was brought to my, I'm surprised we've missed this through all the different processes. Matt, if you could go back up to the submitted proffers. Go down to, what was it, number five? That references, when it, it talks about the one principal dwelling in proffer three. I think proffer three dealt with the emergency services component. If you go back down to five, I think that particular item should be proffer four. Where it references proffer three, it should reference proffer four. And it'd be the last sentence on that. So with the concurrence, if, if any change, it has to be a concurrence with the applicant to fix it, again, waive with that. So we would have to have those resubmitted, and of course, Mr. Barber would re-sign those resubmitted proffers with the correction on it. And then, of course, it would be their responsibility to record, and they'd go to the. I just wanted to bring that.
Thank you, sir.
Cast everybody's attention.
Thanks, David.
Any citizens wanting to address this at this time? Want everybody to come up at once? Go in once, all right? We will close the public comment period on the rezoning 2019-02. Do any of our supervisors have questions or comments? We've got a, situation's been brought to us, nine to zero in favor of doing it by the planning commission, and I fail to see any downside to the county for doing it. So at this point, the chair would entertain a motion on 2019-02.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that the board approve rezoning 2019-02.
We have a motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Duly seconded, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say that at the planning commission, there was discussion about the remaining areas, and, and I think that those have been well explained today and satisfied. So, you know, once it was reviewed on the repairing buffer, that that seemed to be all in accord.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I think I had no problem with it, you know, for family memory and, you know, from where it could have been, and with the proffers and everything that's involved in it, I feel very fine with this situation.
All right then, we will call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so order.
Sir, I'd like to say one thing. Mr. Krebs, I don't care if it's the world, you just have to, we're getting corrected.
You didn't let Betty review it first.
David makes sure that these proffers are recorded. There have been instances where proffers have not been recorded, and we've had to come almost have to go to court. David, actually, the last time, walked me over to the board, had to make sure that I recorded them, so, but I thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right, moving right along, our second ordinance deals with inoperable vehicles. And before we begin this, I want to be sure that everybody understands, this is your Board of Supervisors being responsive to citizen complaints. We did not just sit down one day and think, "What kind of contentious issue can we bring up and have a public hearing on and get people stirred up?" So this is an, in, in responsible response to citizen concerns. David, you want to present this for us?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Longus is going to make the presentation. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I think in September, we had a meeting, and I was here discussing the draft ordinance that we were asked to come up with on behalf of some complaints we've been getting for inoperable vehicles. So I can give a basic overview again of some of the definitions and the purposes of coming up with this draft.
Mark, I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
It's basically, whereas the Board of Supervisors from Middlesex County of Virginia have determined that the existence of inoperable vehicles, excuse me, motor vehicles, trailers, and semi-trailers on the property of Middlesex constitute a fire hazard, and a hindrance in fighting a fire creates unsanitary harbor of rodents and insects, and constitutes an attractive nuisance to the children, and presents other substantial health and safety hazards to Middlesex County and Middlesex County citizens. And also, whereas the Board of Supervisors have determined that inoperable motor vehicles, trailers, and semi-trailers on the property of Middlesex County are detrimental to the welfare of Middlesex County citizens, as the existence of such vehicles reduces property values, dissuades relocation of families, businesses to the area, and discourages tourism. And whereas the staff has determined the following ordinance entitled to the inoperable vehicles. The definitions that we have here and the ordinance that we have drafted up are from the code, they're direct definitions, we haven't added anything to them. I was actually addressing some issues, or some questions, not relationships, but for the definition of a vehicle, and we have it in the definition for a vehicle referring back to the code of what a vehicle is, and it goes through each step of even down to a motorcycle, stating that a vehicle is anything that you ride on going down the road. So it's basically, we just have vehicles, I mean, any motor vehicle, trailer, semi-trailer, except for, and that code section of the Code of Virginia from 1950 has amended. So we refer back to a definition when someone makes a written complaint that there's inoperable vehicles, and still look back at the definitions to make sure these are meeting the ordinance or the complaint follows the definition of what we're looking at. Also, we addressed the shielded or screened. What we're looking for is either a masonry wall, a hedge or dense evergreen landscaping planning, you can have a treated wood fence, a stockade board, batten panel, or similar type, and also, you know, a defective free car cover. I know some of the, the ordinance we have for an automobile junkyard just states a cover, and this one, we had made it clear for a car cover, something that is designed to actually cover the car, not a tarp or a clear plastic cover or anything like that. We wanted to basically say there were three options that we're having with this, is we can have it shielded or screened from view with one of these options, or you can have it inside a, a building itself, but you can have the wall, the hedge, or masonry wall, but the evergreen, and then a fence, or have a car cover on top of the vehicle. And Section 2 is what we, we had left blank in our last meeting in September, and we were leaving it up to you all, the board, to make a decision on what number we were looking at. And for A, the decision that was made for, for those districts listed above, that they were not allowed any inoperable vehicles, and these are vehicles in open view, not containing vehicles that are screened from view from the road, behind a wall, evergreens, or in a building, or underneath a car cover. These are vehicles that are in open view in a driveway, sitting on the yard somewhere. And B, and those remaining LDR, A and RH, it was determined to allow two inoperable vehicles, and those are two open, in open view vehicles. And then in Section C, you gave a total for all the districts of five, and that's five on the property, not to include those that are within a fully enclosed building. So for example, if you were in LDR, you could have two vehicles sitting outside in front of your garage, and then to the side of them, if you had a fence or vegetation, you could actually have three sitting behind that, screened from view. That would be the total of five, and if you had two in the garage, the two in the garage would not count towards the total number of five. It would only be those that are outside. And that's for C, so it is listed that five would be the total in those districts, shielded or screened, and not in open view. And once you have them in the garage, they don't count to that full total of five. And if we move on to Section E, is where we were determining the amount of time between where, if I got a formal written complaint and the office investigated it, what I would be doing is sending out a notice of violation and allowing the person to respond. And we were basically giving them 15 days to respond back to what, what they were going to do, whether they were going to remove them, cover them, put them inside a building. And from that point, if the 15 days had expired and they had not made progress or had to come back and contacted us, then we would be contacting the county attorney to move forward with any type of procedures we need to move through. And the procedures that we had determined, there were two we're looking at. One would be removal of the vehicle from the premise. We were kind of leaning towards not going that route. We would rather go to court over it versus physically removing the car and just going before the judge and having a decision made there. And also, G was the final decision, we had determined there that the fine would be not more than $250. I think there were two options, and this was the last show of the option. And overall, the draft we've come up with is pretty lenient on the number, considering other surrounding counties that have a restriction of basically one to none allowed on properties throughout their counties, so. So we've got a limit of the numbers listed, no in those sections, two in those, and again, these are vehicles in the open that are out in play, do not count in cars behind fences, shrubbery, and stuff like that. And it's ultimately, it's complaint based for me. When I have to evaluate it, I don't go around looking for these violations. This is strictly a written complaint that someone's giving me and I have to observe them. I believe, Heather may correct me on it, but I look at it as, if I can see them from the roadway. If someone's on ten acres and it's wooded and I sit at the state highway and I can't see a vehicle in there, there's, I'm not going to trespass on the property just to go find those vehicles. But if they're lined up against the property line and the neighbor allows me to go on the property to see them, that's a different situation. But again, this is complaint based in open view. And again, I stress, I'm not riding around looking at this. So if this gets passed, tomorrow I'll not be driving around looking for vehicles. It'll be strictly, again, complaint based. So, and that's about it. If you have questions, I'll have to answer any.
Any questions, Mark? Must have been very thorough.
Yes.
No questions. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I'd like to open up the public comment period on the inoperable vehicle ordinance. First citizen, please.
And welcome to another day here. Only in the United States do we really have, truly have private property rights. Nothing says that I have to enhance my property to help my neighbor pay higher taxes. We are supposed to be able to use our property the way they are. One particularly place that this gentleman is talking about, the man is perpetrating fraud on the public and taking vehicles in and promising to fix them and not doing it. That is different than what we do. I am allergic to car payments. We have a nineteen eighty-four Zuzu, and after one million miles and fifteen years, it began to make clunking noises and the frame had given up, so we had to park it. My husband has been in the process of trying to rebuild another car for him to drive. You cannot get parts for these Azuzus. And based on the amount of mileage that you can get with an Azuzu engine, if you get a million miles on an engine, you know it's really good. You can't get that with an American car. And so it takes, if you want a radiator, you got to find a carcass that has a radiator. And so that's the kind of things that we do. We keep things out of the way and so that we don't interfere. But due to my husband's health issues, it's prevented the usual speed at which we get all this done. The agricultural farms have a lot of things that don't run, and they kind of park them because it's easier than trying to do something else. It's also very expensive to try and get your vehicle away from the house and gone somewhere. We have done it, we've taken the parts off and taken the cars, you know, as we use them and use them up and they're gone. I take exception to the one where he says you can only have five inoperable vehicles. If you can't see them, there should be no issue. So I hate to see that as a, as a final deal. And I hope that you will consider that we are losing our rights to our property through ordinances and through other intrusions on our freedoms. And we may not have a country when it gets done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next citizen, please.
Good evening, I'm Betty Lucas, Canter Drive in Hartfield. I wish to address private property rights. Ernest Huber, official Nazi Party spokesman in nineteen thirty-three said, "All property is common property. The owner is bound by the people and the Reich to the responsible management of his goods. His legal position is only justified when he satisfies this responsibility to the community." The Nazi land philosophy. The issue of land ownership is secondary. What counts is the issue of control. Private citizens therefore, may continue to hold title to property so long as the state reserves to itself the unqualified right to regulate the use of their property. America is the only country that has private property rights. Do you want to do everything in your power to protect those rights? Or do you want to continue the current path to diminish these rights? Thank you for your service to Middlesex County.
Thank you, ma'am. Next citizen, please.
We're a village community beside Hominy Grove Church, and yes, we have several semis there and inoperable trailers. I don't think it's a fire hazard or no, and it's something that doesn't have rodents to my knowledge, but we object to this. A lot of those, some of the stuff that's on that property have been there longer than you've been citizens of Middlesex County. I've tagged team on this lady. I resent you telling me what we can and cannot do with our property that we pay taxes on. If your complaint, person that complains would like to stop and discuss this, we'll be glad to discuss it with them. But I object to having the ordinance telling us what we can and cannot have on our property. He didn't mention lawnmowers, that'll be the next thing. It is a vehicle, it operates, it has an engine, it has four wheels. You're going to go around people's yards and tell them they got to remove their lawnmower because it's, doesn't operate? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next citizen, please. Anyone else?
I'm James Jurrington, live at seventy-five twenty-eight Turnpike Highway. I work in Middlesex Metals and we buy a lot of junk cars. We don't want anybody to bring cars in that they can still use parts off of or need things to keep on. And they talk about having kids getting in cars and getting hurt, fires, problems with fires with the cars. I've never heard of one in Middlesex County, the fire department having trouble getting around automobiles, kids getting in cars, getting hurt. If y'all can remember, any, let me know. But I think everybody should have a right to keep what they want to on their property, as long as it not hurt, be in danger, anybody hurting anyone, it should be as legal of us to have it. And I think it's, when you start pushing people, telling them what they have to do and what they can do, I think it's kind of, kind of a mistake. You can't cover everything up, you can't hide everything, and you shouldn't have to. I mean, as long as you're paying taxes, you shouldn't have to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
I hadn't planned on talking about this, but these people really impressed me. In my younger days, I had-
Name and address, sir, I know you.
Robert Roberts.
Yes, sir.
Fifty-two Lockleys Creek Road. My younger days, I was a motorhead and I've built, I have a nineteen eighty-four S-ten. When I got out of, when I left the service, they have a thing called project transmission, transition, excuse me. And they taught you how to do something different and I took up cars instead of machine guns. But I worked on this thing, I've been working on this thing for twenty years. It's, I've been to body school, I'm a certified welder. This thing is beautiful. I've never driven this thing fifty feet and it's on a trailer on my property. I don't have a garage at the moment, yet to be determined whether or not I'm going to build one, I don't know yet. But sometimes things just take a little longer for people and I agree with what that, those ladies said. I'm starting to not even recognize this country anymore. We're losing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Joanne Noack and I live in Locust Hill. And I do not agree with these people. I also have rights and I pay my taxes. I also pay a car tax. And they have multiple vehicles in yards that they don't pay anything on and they're just sitting there. Half of them are up on cinder blocks. I'm, sorry, I agree with this.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to address the inoperable vehicle? Yes, sir.
Yes, Iris Gresham, fourteen sixty-six Salas Road in Locust Hill, Virginia. Excuse my voice. I agree with the people prior to this young lady coming up, that we should have a right to have vehicles on our land. Myself personally, I am a, what you call an old car enthusiast. I have several olden vehicles on my property that I use parts off of. I currently have one sixty-six Chrysler down, looking for parts now. I mean, junkyards, they crush parts. They crush cars before you can go find parts. And I'm a citizen of this county who has a hobby of, you know, just having cars, old cars, I just love old cars. And if we crush all the old cars, we're going to not going to have parts to repair our cars. So I'm standing to say that if you take that away from us to have a few cars on our property, and I understand that, you know, the neighbor cross the, cross the way, it might not look good to them, but the old saying is, one person's junk is another person's treasure. I wish you would consider that. And also, for some rate that our neighbors could come and talk to us about what they see instead of going to the courthouse or somebody here, you know, we could resolve problems a whole lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If there are no other individuals wishing to address this ordinance, we will declare the public comment period closed and we'll go back to the supervisors for comments, questions, and/or a motion.
I'll start this off, you know, I sit down and look at, this is what the public hearing about, you know? Just think about it. You want to hear from the people there and before we make our decision. And to make a wise decision, you know, you have to decide, you know, the pros and cons of everything. And sitting here tonight, you know, I look at it, you know, the majority of people, you know, want their rights, you know, so there's a lot of various situations why people have cars on their property and then there's reason not. But from here, the majority of the people, you know, they don't want this. And just making a wise decision, you know, why take away some people's rights if you got an old car and you're going to say, well, you know, and you want to get parts off of it, and you hear certain things. And then I look at, you look at the other side of a person saying, well, I don't want to see this. Don't look at it, alright? You just drive right past it. If you don't want to look at it, or you're going to sit down and talk with a person and say, what can we do to settle this? You know, that's how I look at it. You know, it's communication. Instead of going out, making, you know, different plans, but like I'm saying, you can fence it up, that's another option, and put whatever cars back there. You got Doc Jones, talk to Doc. You know, Doc Jones out there, he'd be glad to pull your car. But if that person complaining about it, and the person that's complaining, talk with that neighbor and if they want to kind of move, work something out. If they don't, move on, you know? I'm just saying, you know, a lot of times, people make things complicated, but you know, if you lose a lot of wise sense of dealing with people, and like I said, I've been here all my life, you know, people know that. And you're going to have cars, I'm going to tell you, I'm more up in the county, a lot of rural area farms and different things like that, and I have a few cars myself. And, you know, work vans and different things like that. I know I'm going to have to put some fencing up, no doubt about it. But you know, to say, you know, you're going to limit it, what you got, when you don't know everybody's situation, and that's what you got to look at. Everybody's situation with these cars is going to be a little bit different. You got some people that got business, you know, you got, you plumbing or whatever, HVAC, they're going to be a different, but then you're going to sit down and dictate to those people, well, you only can have this and you only can have that. It's wrong. And I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, that's how I feel about it. Now, a lot of people can sit up there and say, well, you know, one person, if they came from a person, they did, a lot of times it comes from one person, and that's what's wrong with a lot of times, even with religion and different things like that. One person messed it up for praying in school. I know I'm going off to the side here, but I'm just saying, it's people working together, that's what you got to look at. And I don't know how the other boys may feel here, you know, but like I'm saying, just be realistic and look at all their options. And I'm not in favor of it.
Any other comments? I would like to say that I don't think anybody advocates more for private property, personal property rights than I do. I think that's one of the, one of the strongest things that we've got going. And I agree with the people that said, if you don't like what you're looking at, all you got to do is cast your glance away and you don't have to look at it. And I'm not speaking for or against this, but there's something else that is in play here that I'd like for all of us to keep in mind as we deliberate on this. Our county, and Mr. Jesse alluded to it very well with the Jamaica District being more rural and farther up the county, but for the most part, our county is a waterfront community and we depend on tourists to come in, spend their money, and go back to Richmond or wherever they're going to go. Maybe they even come in here and retire, but they're not the kind of folks that are putting a lot of pressure on expenses for the county because their children are being educated someplace else. And we do need to think, since that's our business, that's our industry, we need to think about what is pleasing and what these people would like to see when they come to their tourist destination. This would like, I'm not advocating for, not advocating against, but I'd like for you to think about that because primarily, this ordinance is dealing with screening. Could I see a show of hands of anybody out there that has more than five inoperable vehicles on their property? That's not in the business, Doc. Being in the business, being in the business doesn't count.
Well, ours is a business. We've been paying business taxes since we started.
Well, if it's a business, I'm not sure how those pieces fit together. But I just would like everybody here to keep in mind where a lot of county revenue comes from and whether or not this ordinance would be good for enhancing the tourist experience here. And I'm not, like I said, I'm not advocating for or against, I'm just putting it out there so you can think about it. Because if we didn't have tourists in this county, we'd have a situation on our hands which would be financially ruinous. Just saying, okay?
And I really want to say too, you know, the tourists not looking at junk cars, they want to go to the water, they want to, you know, for fishing, they're going to do things like that. You think they're going to say, well, I see a bunch of junk cars, I'm not coming there, I'm not coming to Middlesex no more. They come here to the water and to the beach and different things like that, and to fish. You know, they're not fishing for junk cars out in the water, I can tell you that. But, you know, I understand where you're coming from on that. I understand where you're coming from.
A junk car making a nice artificial reef.
But I understand where you're coming from.
Any other comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, my input on this has been from citizens and frequently in neighborhoods or clusters of homes where their lots are not large, so the cars are closer together, closer to the adjoining property and not, you know, wooded or back. And I had a couple of letters last week of people, and their lots are probably about a quarter of an acre. And my concern is that they don't have as much flexibility in, you know, screening unless the owner of the car screens. Whereas, you know, on larger property, you're further from the road, I can see that difference. I guess when we asked for this ordinance, I think that Mr. Longus and our county attorney were trying to strike a balance so that it doesn't prohibit- were trying to strike a balance so that it doesn't prohibit, as I'm reading it, um, the ordinary use of inoperable vehicles for parts as long as it's under five and as long as they're screened from the road. Um, and, and it's only complaint driven. I don't, I don't see this as, um, being a huge burden. And I'm, I'm trying to be open to those considerations. Cause I do think private property rights are very important. I, I just think that this seems to be striking a balance. And then in a couple of the more rural zones, um, it's two, right, that are available.
That's what I was gonna ask Mark. Um, we looked at, at surrounding counties, similar counties, and their, their ordinances that are already in place. And this is, as I recall, more generous on the property owner's ability to have more cars than, than what our neighbors do.
Yes, sir. And can I point out one thing that, that brought up? D on your screen right now. This provision, this draft, if, if whatever section we go through, D exempts anyone who's already operating under a business license as a dealer of scrap automobile. So if you have vehicles and you have a business and you have semi-trailers and tractor trailers, if you are a legitimate business under this, you are exempt. It's not gonna apply. And that applies to agricultural operations that are currently in operation. They are exempt. So if they're storing old farm equipment, old trailers, they are exempt. They won't be, if someone says, writes a complaint that they got too many tractors out in this operation, I'm gonna say they're exempt from this ordinance. It does not apply. But Section D was put in there for those who are already in operation. And one example I, I guess if I could use is if someone wants to actually have a junkyard, LDR allows for junkyards to be operated. Uh, you would have to go through the planning commission and through y'all to actually have one. So there are options to actually have a lot of vehicles stored. You would just have to apply for the special exception in LDR and go through that step. There are requirements in there, but they would be going through Dave. Um, it's not as, I guess it'd be a simple process, but it takes a couple of months to get through. But it is an option out there for those that wanna have a lot of vehicles. But again, I wanted to just, I didn't go over D quite in the beginning, but it does exempt a lot of things.
I remember that it was in there, cause I said I thought the businesses were exempt.
If a business is in operation, it's licensed business, it may be exempt from this ordinance if it did get passed.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
My other comment is, I did have an example too where it involved, um, someone who was renting property and the owner of the property was putting, um, inoperable vehicles there. And they were wondering if that was, uh, legal. And I think under, we don't have an ordinance that would prohibit that under. That was just really a question. Um, the other thing that I, when I look at an ordinance like this and our goals regarding property, anything we do to, um, uh, just like the previous rezoning when we were trying to, um, protect, um, land that had been set aside for being, being close to the water or had been restricted because of conservation needs. That's all part of zoning too. And that actually has benefits to the entire community and enhances the community. And I, I, I think that this would be along those lines of being a, a reasonable way to enhance the community and not, um, diminish, um, the community. I think it's a good compromise.
Mr. Mansfield, do you wanna weigh in on this in any way, shape, or form?
I certainly heard and, and understand where people are coming from. That the land that they own, they should be able to make their, their, the decision that they feel is right as far as how many vehicles, inoperable or otherwise, they should have on their land. But at the same time, all of us are, are, uh, required to keep our property somewhat good-looking. Uh, for instance, if I recall, you're not allowed to have a home of ill repute or something like, uh, like that. I, I, I don't think this ordinance is trying to put a, an undue burden on, on people. It certainly is not, uh, directed towards, uh, official junkyards, uh, for instance, which are, are properly screened and, and are no, uh, no detriment to the, to the county. But at the same time, I, I am interested in seeing our county, uh, look good. And, uh, I, I think that, you know, in a community, that we all do have a responsibility to, uh, to help make our county look good. I, I think I am in, in favor of, of the ordinance and, uh, I, I, I agree that with, with, with the wording.
This is a little bit out of order, but I won't ask it anyway. I'd like to see another show of hands of people whose problem is with the limiting number, not the screening. If the numbers were not limited, but the vehicles were screened according to this ordinance, how many of you would have problems with that? Seeing none, would it be reasonable to redraft this with screening provisions only?
So you...
Just asking a question. I don't, um...
Well, if I may, the, the reason that the board, we discussed putting in Section C, uh, that discussion was the concern, and this was something the zoning administrator of Dave's, he is still here. One of the concerns that was brought up was that, that this could lend to unauthorized junkyards. And so that was the reason for putting a limit.
Okay. I, I remember that now.
Yes. Um, but if you want to, I mean, this, this is the time, if you wanna remove that provision, you can. But if you would like a new ordinance in its entirety, we can draft that as well, but if...
Well, I don't think anybody that's in the professional junkyard or scrap business wants a backyard operation competing with them that's not licensed and so on. So I think that, that's a bona fide, uh, a bo- help, help me along with this. I can't...
I guess I'm, I don't, I don't fully understand what you, what do you, you want it to be revised to say you can have, um, the inoperable vehicle so long as it's screened?
My concerns are that people that don't wanna see it, that can't avoid looking at it when they come around the corner and they're driving their car. Or tourists that don't wanna see it. If, if, if our citizens that want these vehicles can have them and they're just screened from view, then they're, to my way of thinking, they might as well not be there. I don't, I don't think it's a problem. So that's really what I'm asking.
That's, that is in Section A, I think.
In Section A, they can't have any?
Unless it's screened.
Unless it's screened.
Yeah. So you can have it...
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
They can be behind the screen.
Yeah, they can be behind the screen.
It doesn't prohibit you from having them.
And then...
Or under cover.
Right. And then in LDR and agriculture and resource husbandry, you can have two that are visible. And then the rest have gotta be screened. It sounds like you would like to remove Section Five? I apologize. I'm not trying to be difficult. I don't fully understand.
It sounds to me, and bouncing this off of our citizens, it seems to me that the numbers are where the problems are.
I understand that.
So we can put a number of ten. Nobody that's not in the business exceeds ten. They just simply have to be screened by the screening methods that, that are outlined in this ordinance. Cause if we can get, if we can get what the complaining citizens want and get what the people who don't want this ordinance want, then it's a win-win.
So maybe we could revise Section C to say instead of five, it would say ten?
I think that's what you're...
Is that what you're asking for? Cause then that would...
A number that, that won't cause anybody heartburn as long as they're screened.
I mean...
I'm speaking of the people that have the vehicles on their property.
I mean, I, I would, I, I look to you for that direction. Ten, fifteen, twenty?
I think ten's probably a gracious, gracious plan. Cause you're, you're getting into business if you get, to get much farther than that, I would think.
That, that was our concern from a zoning perspective again, was just the unauthorized junkyards. But ten, we, it, this is your ordinance and you're trying to make those edits if, if you would like to.
Ten would, ten would be reasonable.
Okay.
So that would be changed to Section C would say ten instead of five?
But then in all cases, inoperable vehicles of any number would need to be screened. There's someplace that it had two, two could be in that.
Yeah, so you wanna remove...
I think, I think if, if we're getting generous on that ten side, that those two ought to be screened also. Remembering that they could be up on blocks or any number of things.
Give me just a second. So then you would just simply take, A would be revised to include, where you see the list of zoning, zoning sections, we would just add LDR, agriculture and resource husbandry.
Mm-hmm.
And we would strike Section B?
Yes.
Where, where we've listed them, yeah, at this time. I, I would just add them into it and then just remove Section B.
Again, this is out of order. Show, show of hands of anybody with heartburn with those changes?
Can I ask a question?
If you wanna come up and use your last forty-five seconds, come on up. We closed the public hearing, but I'm, in all, all fairness, I'm, I'm, I'm sorta out of order myself, so...
You are, but that's okay. You're the chair.
So you're saying that it's going to be screened? Is it going to be screened from the complaint that the vehicles are showing? Or is it going to be screened from the road?
Let's read that paragraph of it.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to answer that question?
Please.
Okay. So it, it will depend on each individual situation. But the way our definitions are, it would have to be screened from view. And being screened from view means you have to be standing at ground level, looking at the property. So I'm hesitant to lock into it. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be typical. I won't give you it. But, but it really would depend individually. So it may be, it may be the road and the side.
You answered my question. I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll try to get back in order now. This seems to me to be a compromise that, um, citizens on both sides of this issue can live with. And I think it's one that, that, uh, well, I came up with it, so I guess I think it's fair.
All right. So, so just to recap, we're gonna revise A to now include all zoning districts and which means you cannot have any visible inoperable vehicles, but you can have them so long as they're screened or within a, an enclosed building. And the maximum you can have is ten. So that'll remove Section B. Okay?
All right. Is there any more discussion on that?
I haven't owned ten vehicles in my entire life.
Mr. Jesse, does that, uh, strike a good compromise with you?
I'm, okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at it.
I think that's...
Okay. If the, well, we would have a motion in a second and then have discussion, so I won't say if there's no more discussion.
I'll, I'll, I'll offer a motion, um, to get the discussion. So, um, it, I would, uh, move that the board, approve the inoperable vehicle ordinance, um, as written with the exception... With mine is...
With the amendments of making A inclusive of all zoning districts to include LDR, agricultural...
So with the amendment of, Section A will include all zoning districts, uh, properties owned DRC, CRVC, CD, GB, WC, LI, or MH, or LDR, A, or RH. Uh, pursuant to the zoning ordinance, any inoperable vehicles.
Remove B.
Section B will be deleted. And Section C will read, it will, shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation or any property zoned in any zone. Do you mean listed?
That's okay.
Pursuant to Middlesex County zoning ordinance to keep more than ten inoperable vehicles even if shielded or screened from view by covers, unless they are kept within a fully enclosed building or structure.
So if you wanna have more than ten, they just gotta be in a garage.
Or if you have ten, you have...
There's a motion. Let's have a second and then go into discussion if you don't mind.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
Need a second.
If we have a second, we can start discussion. Not a hard and fast rule, but it's just a good one, cause if we're not gonna get a second, there's no need to discuss it. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Very good.
The people that can have ten, uh, are licensed, uh, junkyards.
That's not the way it currently reads. No, it would just be you can have ten, up to a maximum of ten screened. If you wanna have more than ten, the only way you're gonna have them is inside of an enclosed garage. Again, we're trying to get at, the concern was of people having unauthorized junkyards.
But, but what if you have a legitimate junkyard?
Then you, then that's not, this isn't applicable to you.
This doesn't have anything to do with it.
This doesn't apply to you.
They're licensed and they pay a business license and they can do that, just like, just like Doc Jones can.
Okay, but our, our junkyards will be okay under this?
Yes, yes. There's a separate ordinance. There's a separate ordinance that relates to that. They, they have to operate under separate, um, ordinance for that type of business.
Is there any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Hearing one. It's one, two, three to one, so the motion passes. Thank you, folks. All right. Our third and final piece of business is the ground lease with the Middlesex Foundation. Who is our presenter there?
Mr. Chairman, I'll kick that off if you don't mind. I'm gonna kinda go from the back and work my way up. Uh, this is the public hearing on the ground le- lease for the Cook's Corner Revitalization Project, which will allow the Middlesex Foundation to lease a portion of county-owned property identified as a northwest portion of Tax Map twenty-seven dash one seventy-seven, which is generally located behind the current school bus parking area on General Puller Highway, Salute, Virginia, or Cook's Corner as we know it. The leased area would be for the development of the Middlesex Foundation's workforce housing project. And if I can, I'm gonna zoom out and give a better idea of where we're talking about. As many people, including the board, are aware, we're in the process of implementing a Vibrant Communities Initiative grant, which the housing portion or housing, uh, project, the workforce housing project is a portion of that grant. Uh, the area referred to is the school bus parking area is roughly right in this area. Currently behind the school bus, uh, the school bus garage, uh, social services, our parks and rec facility, and our school board office. Pretty much where you see the school buses parked currently. The area of the property in question is the far western portion of the property. It's approximately six acres depicted on this, uh, proposed site layout. You have two buildings comprised of twelve units apiece, maximum of twenty-four units at this point in time. And the remainder of that tax map parcel is being held in reserve for a historic and interpretive walking trail and exercise path, which is a portion of the grant as well. This lease is needed in order for the workforce housing, uh, project to move forward and the Middlesex Foundation to receive the necessary funding from the Department of Housing, uh, which is, um, and I'm gonna invite Bruce DeSimone to the podium in a moment to answer questions and give a little bit of feedback on, uh, how the Virginia Department of Housing works. Uh, he is our expert on Virginia Department of Housing. Uh, the project as, is in your packet, uh, has, well, the lease and, uh, the foundation have, uh, demonstrated the, I guess, the attached elevation of the buildings. This is a mirror, um, I don't know how to say it. It's basically a mirrored view. The front and the back look identical. Uh, you have, I would imagine, six units on one side, six units on the other, each facing the same way. So the elevations for the development are identical, front and back. And this is the proposed lease area. It is the six acres behind where we're parking school buses now, uh, owned by Middlesex County. And of course, this area that has some topogra- uh, topographical features are being held in reserve for the exercise path, historic, interpretive trail, and, uh, other accoutrements involved around the historic path. The lease has been drafted over a series of months. Do I wanna exaggerate and say we've been working on it a year? No, I better not. Uh, back and forth, uh, the, uh, foundation has secured legal counsel familiar with the Department of Housing requirements. Heather and I have been back and forth with their legal counsel and Bruce on the lea- Heather and I have been back and forth with their legal counsel and Bruce on the lease. I won't get into too much detail unless we have specific questions about specific parts, and then we've got the people requisite in the room to answer those questions. In my opinion, it's a fairly balanced lease, gives the board considerable amount of control over the project and oversight. One key provision is, we require the foundation to report on an annual basis their budget and their, and their audit, financial audit, to make sure they're operating in a sound, sustainable manner. We also can, we withhold considerable amount of control over any architectural changes that they make to the buildings and the site, once that's approved. The board has final say on that. Most important part of this lease is, it affords the foundation an opportunity to move forward with workforce housing, but the board of supervisors in the county retain ownership and control over the property. So there are necessary safeguards in that respect built into this. I think we have in the lease adequate protections on guarding against if something should, God forbid, happen to the foundation, the county get left holding the bag, so to speak, but we're here to answer any questions you may have on the lease. And as, as the lease has been in the office for quite some time, we haven't had any questions forwarded to us regarding it. So we're here to open it up to the public, see what they think, and answer any questions that the board asks.
Bruce, what would you like to add?
I think Matt covered it pretty clearly. We're working on, I mean, we could start construction tomorrow, as far as the plans and specs being approved, the building permits ready to be pooled, we're just working out the details on the financing and, and then the ground lease.
Not, not to call you cold on this, but can you go over the leasing preference? I think we had three tiers of leasing preference, or first leasing preference for the workforce housing.
Yeah, the, we have three preferences that we would accept applicants. The first would be for Middlesex employees and, and employees of the Middlesex schools. The second preference would be government employees and school employees of immediately adjacent counties. And then the third preference would be governmental, or quasi-governmental agencies serving the citizens of Middlesex, such as the Community Services Board, or the Area Agency on Aging, or the Regional Security Center. These are the folks would be given preference when a unit becomes available. And if none of those preferences, or people on that waitlist are in among that preference, then, then a unit would be available to anyone who qualifies from a credit and criminal history standpoint.
An income standpoint, too.
Yes, yes.
One item of our discussions previous this afternoon regarding some of the challenges facing the regional jail with securing the guards, and, and several of our sheriffs in the region have difficulty attract, attracting qualified staff. This was the, I guess, the foundational reason, for lack of a better term, of why the county moved forward with the foundation on this project. We'd been hearing for years from the schools that one of the impediments to attracting young teachers is the impediment they face on finding affordable housing in the community. As an entity that provides workforce housing, you have a certain leg up on, you know, recruiting new staff. What was demonstrated in Lancaster County, for instance, when they implemented the Mercer Place project, was they found that, okay, we realize we don't pay as much as Spotsylvania, but we have this really nice apartment complex, which you would have leasing preference in, and, you know, you have a safe, clean, attractive place to live. And that was really one of the principal reasons the workforce housing, or workforce, or Middlesex Foundation was formed, to provide that extra benefit potentially for recruiting newer, younger, maybe entry-level staff that may have difficulty living and working in Middlesex, primarily because of finding affordable housing.
Matt, remind me, if you will, there was a request that came from the foundation some time ago about tax exemption.
They, they are not.
If we're leasing the property to them, we're maintaining ownership, therefore, we don't, not taxing the real estate, is that correct?
Well, the foundation will pay taxes on the improvements on the property.
On the improvements, but not on the dirt?
Actually, on both.
Okay.
And.
That was what I thought, we were, that you had asked for that earlier, and we had respectfully said, one of the nice aspects of this project for the county is it converts non-taxable property into taxable property.
Right.
And then when we started talking about a lease, I started going, oh, wait a minute, but if, if that's all covered, I'm good.
And, and not to be flip on the subject, we love them, but we don't love them that much. We want them to pay taxes, and we want them to incorporate that into their overall budget, because when you set certain precedents, it's hard to draw a line.
Right.
And pick and choose, and it put the board in a difficult situation on picking and choosing.
I just wanted that clarified.
Very good.
Because that's what I thought I remembered.
One thing I would like to add to Matt's description, you know, it's part of the revitalization area. Counties make, putting, investing money into some improvements at the gymnasium. You know, there's the Brew Pub Restaurant and Event Center across thirty-three. So we're not just looking at twenty-four apartments, we're really creating a community that would be attractive, I think, to young professionals and others wanting to, to work here in Middlesex. When we started working on this, I think there were two teachers living in Mercer Place, now there are four, so.
Four of our teachers that are in Mercer Place, in Lancaster?
Well, if I may, Bruce, one of the criticisms the foundation have had leveled against them, and I guess the county has too, is, well, we're building this housing complex, and you're going to let people from Essex or Gloucester, and their employees potentially live there. Isn't it just supposed to be for Middlesex employees? Well, yes, Middlesex employees, whether they're sheriff's employees, school employees, social services employees, or rank-and-file county employees, have first leasing preference. But yes, indeed, if there are spaces available after that, surrounding counties and their employees will have leasing possibilities there. To me, that's a strength, because what we have done then is, we've taken young professionals or, or those government employees, we know where they work, and they're living and spending money here in Middlesex County. They're coming home and going to our restaurants, you know, God willing, and they're living in our community. And to me, that's an asset, having more families, or more folks live in the community, shop and work, potentially work in our area, but live here and spend money in our area.
Any other questions or comments from the supervisors to either Bruce or Matt?
Yeah, what's the average cost of rental for those apartments?
Last week, we did five units at eight hundred and thirteen dollars a month, and the other nineteen at nine hundred dollars a month.
And for the benefit of the public, the foundation will be operating these on, on after maintenance, after expense, basically break even, and so not having a profit margin built into it is, is what makes these more beneficial for our lower-paid professionals.
Yeah, we could have taken, I mean, I think for a small project like this, a developer's fee up to about ten percent of the, the construction cost, but there's no developer's fee in this. It's, you know, pulling the money together to put the project in the ground and, and not expecting any profit.
Any other questions or comments before we open up public comment?
Well, I just had one comment, that this does form the basis of a community. I think that, that aspect of housing for people new to the county, coming here for work, I think is, is one aspect of it. And the, the idea is that someone who comes here and takes a job here, works, and stays, then would maybe want to rent a larger house, or perhaps purchase a house. It, it's sort of an anchor, and I think that's part of the economic development aspect of this, I think.
Yeah, we fully expect that people, you know, I think, arriving in Middlesex, not knowing anything about Middlesex, we're trying to create a, a community, a warm community that's, that would be welcoming to folks. And then as their preferences change, we certainly would love to see them move into a, another house, you know, house in, in another part of the county, and leave that unit available for another, another person who's looking to, to live here.
And Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, we've toured Mercer Place several times with board members and other folks associated with the grant process. It's my understanding that they've actually found that to be the case. A teacher or a social worker will move into the workforce housing in Mercer Place, stay there a few years, meet somebody, or, you know, that's, I guess, the key, and then they find a house and they move out. But they, they have a soft entry into the community, and they get the feel of the area, and then they buy where they want to buy.
And they're really, the only two apartment projects down in Delta Ville is for seniors and, and folks with disabilities, and then you've got the apartments that Bay Aging developed outside of Urbana, but those are for folks sixty-two and older. So there really isn't a kind of apartment community that's available to folks who aren't elderly here in Middlesex.
The other question that we have, I, I won't say we received it, but one of the potential questions we could have is, why sixty years? Why sixty years, Bruce?
It's twice the term of a loan that we would take.
Yeah.
And that's what VHDA, Virginia Housing Development Authority, would require.
So that's the short answer to that.
Anything else of Bruce or Matt? Not stand back, or we may need you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm sure we will, but might not be tonight. Any, we'd like to go ahead and open public comment on the, on ground lease for the Middlesex Foundation? Yes, sir.
Robert Roberts, Blackley's Creek Road, tapping. It sounds like, I like it. How many square feet would those be?
A thousand fifty. People all too bad, too bad for loans.
Yeah, I thought it was around a thousand.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. Next citizen, please.
Actually, it's a three-minute clock. Monica Sanders. The only thing that bothers me is when a municipality holds, you know, the ability to lease, and I was a landlady for a long time, and I didn't fall under any federal guidelines, but I think you all may do that, and I'm not sure, and I'm still doing research on this, that if the federal guidelines kick in, you may not be able to lease it to whoever you want to. There may be people down here speaking languages we never heard of and so forth. And it's just, have you all looked into that, or gotten a copy of the Landlord Tenet Act, or, Heather, have you looked into that at all, or?
The staff can, can answer your questions after the hearing.
Oh, okay, well, anyway.
If we get dialogue going, that, that sounds healthy.
Okay, well, anyhow, I just, I, I'm, I'm trying to look into it from another angle, you know, I've got somebody else working on it, so, I just wanted to make you aware it might be a, a can of worms if we don't get it straight. And thank you for your help on the last one.
Next citizen, please.
I can answer that one question if you want me to say it at the end.
Yeah.
And comment if you would like.
We can.
At, at the end.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
That was what I was going to ask.
Yeah, because I can get that with one sentence.
Bob Jackson, Auburn, Virginia. I'm looking at the Monday cost for these apartments, eight thirteen a month for the cost of the apartments. I think that's what Bruce said. Now, these apartments were geared for teachers, social service workers, CSB workers. Now, based on the salaries that these teachers just got, are they qualified to be, to get into these apartments? That's my main question. Who is qualified, and how much are the, can they make to get into these apartments? That's the only one thing I want to know. Thank you.
We can answer that at the end, too.
Yeah. Will you hold on to that one, too, Heather?
Yeah, we got it.
Bruce? Next citizen, please. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and within the comments of the members of the board and county attorney and county administrator, we can answer the two questions that have been posed. You all tagged them.
And I was going to ask, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll take the last one first. Bruce, and I've had that question posed to us before. Bob, I think I can live in the apartment, but they won't give me a, a gas fireplace, so I'm, I'm not going to do it. But can you address that? I think there are a certain number of apartments that are income qualified, and then some others that aren't.
Yeah.
They just won't give me that gas fireplace, Bob.
Actually, the financing is all state, it's Virginia Housing Development Authority, the State Housing Finance Agency issues bonds, and then they lend the money for projects. There's also funding from the State Housing Trust Fund, which is just state general fund dollars, that that was part of the Vibrant Communities Initiative. The State Housing Trust Fund dollars requires that those five units I mentioned at eight hundred and thirteen dollars a month are considered for folks earning eighty percent of area median, of the county's area, area, eighty percent of the county's area median income. So that's why those units are restricted at eight hundred and thirteen. For the remaining units, I think it's like another thirty percent at a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, which is considered moderate income, and then the others, the other units are, there's no income with it. We're, I was looking at starting teacher's salary, a little over, I think, forty-one thousand in the current, current year, and if you were to take annualized thirty percent of that salary and subtract a utility allowance of about eighty-five dollars a month, that would make that teacher supposedly able to afford a unit at about nine hundred and fifty dollars a month. So we're trying to keep those rental costs low enough in order to embrace as many county employees, as well as other folks working in the area. But those numbers, I think, will give you a feel for how they all fit together.
So the short answer is yes?
Yes, with no fireplace.
With no fireplace, I get it.
And then in regards to Ms. Sanders' question about whether or not some of the federal regulations, of course, I do not represent the Middlesex Foundation, but, and so I defer to their counsel, but it isn't, we have discussed the topic, and I know she's referring to the Landlord Tenet Act, and there's limitations on what restrictions you can put on housing. I would just simply state that we're aware of those regulations, and I've discussed them with, with counsel, and she does not believe it'll be an, an issue.
Very good. All right, then, we have, he heard the presentation, we've had public comment, we've answered the public's questions. Do we have a motion on the ground lease?
Motion, we have a ground lease for workforce housing.
Oh, second it.
Motion, and duly seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. So this completes our public hearings, and after public hearings, we have another public comment period. Same rules apply, three minutes. Please address the board, tell us who you are, where you live. Does anybody want to address the board on any issues?
May, may I say, for Monica Sanders, this is not, we're actually doing exactly what Lancaster has been doing for, for several years, and I, to my knowledge, they've had no problem with, with any federal, federal rulings.
Any citizens want to address the board with their concerns over just about anything? Yes, sir.
Robert Roberts, Blackley's Creek Road. I'm going back to the issue of the airport again. I was in contact with the state FAA, and they told me that, that you who own the airport should be able to, be able to control those flight, the guys at the flight school are the worst ones. Now, you know, I'm sixty-seven years old, we get no peace, me and my wife get no, I said it once before, we get no peace. I got airplanes pivoting. I got airplanes pivoting on top of my house, you know, and for the life of me, I don't know why. I'm afraid to go over there, because I'm afraid what, what it'll turn into. Now, I, I think it's your job to go in there and find out why you're earmarked to do it, to fly away from my house. Chad Weaver, who is gone now, he worked with the FAA, it was probably one of the last things that he initiated was, you know, he put some signs up and gave them direction to turn away from my house. And for the life of me, these guys, you would think they would. I mean, it's an open field. I don't get it, you know, instead of flying over my house. You know, I cut down pine trees for their safety. Now, you know, I was a good neighbor to them, and I expect, you know, them to be a good neighbor for us. We get no peace. It's in crack of dawn in the morning, it's all day long, it's day in, it's day out, they're flying airplane, and this is the flight school. The rest of the, most of the pilots, I can say they, they're getting it. But these guys just will not do it, and I'm asking you, please, it's your airport, you know, you should be able to control them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other citizens, please? Seeing none, we will declare the public comment period over and entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.